Good morning. I want to call to order the April 22, 2013 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. At this time, we'll have our prayer and our pledge and Commissioner Mike Vought will release them both. Stand with me, please.
Bow with me, please. Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to come together to conduct our county's business. We ask that you grant us wisdom in our decisions. We ask that you be with each citizen of this county, be with those that are less fortunate and those that are sick. In Christ's name, we pray, amen. You'll face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, maybe see. Call or roll, please, Gals.
Rhonda Allen?
Here.
Jim Everwater?
Here.
Veronica Buchanan?
Here.
Will Jordan?
Here.
Mike Kush?
Present.
Craig Lynch?
Here.
Pettis Reed?
Here.
Steve Sandlin?
Mike Vought?
Here.
Jeff Phillips?
Present.
We have corn.
Thank you. This time, we'll need to approve our minutes. I'll call on our Vice Chair, Craig Lynch.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve those minutes.
Have a motion to approve.
Take it.
And a second. All who is in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Thank you. Item five, withdrawn or deferred, Doug?
No, sir. Nothing's been withdrawn or deferred.
Item seven, committed for preliminary plat approval, A, Rose Ridge, item 13-1001, revisions, seven lots, six residential lots, and one detention lot on 27.20 acres, zoned RM, located along Colan Avenue, RZM LLC developer. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Planning Commissioners will recall, this plat, the preliminary, was originally considered and approved by the Commission at their February 25, 2013 meeting. If it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, both the preliminary and the final plat deal with this same subdivision, so my comments will be for both. However, we probably will need to have separate motions to consider both of those, but the explanation's the same. As you recall, you can see on your monitors that this is an extension of Colan Avenue from the Plantation South subdivision, which is in the city limits of Murfreesboro, right to the south. They're proposing a six residential lot and one detention lot for the subdivision. These are larger tracts. A couple of them are over five acres, but the remainder about two and a half acres or so. You'll recall, when we first looked at this plat, there was a portion of the city, a proportion of the property, excuse me, in the city limits of Murfreesboro, and that'd be here on the far left. You can see, this is the city limit line right here, and you can see that this portion of the property, while it was still part of the overall tract, was actually inside the city limits of Murfreesboro. Since that time, the applicants have met with the city of Murfreesboro, Planning Department officials, and the solution they've come to is that they're going to take this area through here, they're actually going to plat it and deed it over to the Scottish Glen subdivision, to their homeowner's association to be used as common area, which will leave the remainder part of the subdivision within the county. So that particular issue will be resolved as far as having a plat that had both city property and county property, or county jurisdiction, city jurisdiction, on the same plat. As far as staff is concerned, we don't have any real issue with that. Our biggest concern is that the plat that creates these lots over here for that common area needs to be recorded prior to the final plat for this subdivision being recorded, because if the larger area was recorded first, it would remain, it would leave this remainder property right through here, which would create an illegal subdivision. Something else they've done, and I'll kind of zoom in here just a little bit to show you what we're referring to. This area right through here, of course, it backs up to these residential lots here along Linden Drive into Plantation South subdivision. Originally, they had the right-of-way, pretty much abutting the property line, which in and of itself isn't a real issue, but the applicant was wanting to put a fence through there for a little bit of privacy for the people, since that is their backyard. After looking at that, and again, speaking with city officials, they've actually shifted this road a few feet to the north. It's actually a five-foot area right through here, which is going to be common space for them to maintain the fence. It's actually going to be part of Lot Six, this larger lot right in here. Again, it's a little difficult to see, but let me just move it over here. But this is Lot Six, and it'll actually be included within this as common area. Now, there does need to be a note added to both the preliminary and the final plat that better describes this area right through here, and what area it's going to be considered, the homeowner's association for the Rose Ridge subdivision. So, there's an understanding that whoever owns Lot Six won't be responsible for maintaining this little bit of strip right through here for that fence.
Did you say will or will not be responsible?
The owner will not be responsible. This small strip right through here, it's the responsibility of the homeowner's association.
Government.
Yes, sir. So, you want to see a note on the plat, both the preliminary and the final, to that effect.
Who maintains the fence, Doug?
That would be the responsibility of the homeowner's association for Rose Ridge.
Of this new subdivision.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, that's the, just a brief description of that. One other comment that we did have on here, and this was from our engineering staff, and I'll let Mr. Corbett elaborate on this. Since this is a change to the original preliminary, they will need to submit revised construction drawings for our review. Dill, I don't know if you have any other comments on that?
Doug, have we ever done this before, where we've allowed a common area to be part of a private lot?
It belongs to Lot Two.
That just feels awkward to me, that it's going to be technically owned by someone who's not responsible for maintaining it.
At one point, a lot of our drainage adjustments were like that, as I recall.
That's correct.
So, I mean, it's, we don't make a practice out of it, but it's not unheard of. It has happened before.
Are there other options?
Well, the only other option would be to make that a lot in and of itself, but that doesn't meet any of the criteria as far as lot width, or lot area, or anything, because it would still have to be a minimum of 15,000 square feet. I mean, without, unless they just kept the road where it was, but I think this is a better solution as far as, it gives them a little bit of space between the road and the existing lots to the south. But I don't foresee it being a real issue, I mean, provided the homeowner's association just understands that it's their responsibility to maintain the fence, and that'll just be, you know, upon the homeowner's association at that point.
But there will be a permanent easement that shows that that is common area.
Yeah, that's what we're asking in the...
So, the person who owns Lot Number Six can't come up and say, "That's my property. Get off of it," and stuff, because without it all being recorded correctly, you know, it could be problematic.
Correct.
In the future.
Correct.
And I would guess that if the homeowner's association fell apart, it would fall back to the owner of Lot Number Six to maintain it if nothing else, would it not?
Probably, yes, sir. It would.
But there are a lot of drainage lots out in the county that are on a part of a lot, but there's easement for maintenance and things like that, so.
I guess one of the things I was thinking about is, you know, is that going to be added into their lot size for taxes? Are they going to be paying taxes on a piece of property that's common area?
It would be part of their lot, yes, ma'am. Now, as far as the actual area of that, I mean, it's five foot, I mean, it's pretty long, but I don't think it's going to add that much to their, I mean, it's already over two and a half acres, so I don't think it's going to add that much to it. Of course, the person buying that lot will understand that going into it.
We hope.
Well, they should.
So, the only difference we've got between what we did back in February, and here is the city limits actually cleaning that up a little bit.
Yes, sir.
Over on the other side. I still don't like the look to Lot Number Two, with that little flag coming out to go to it, and there's problems with the creek and all, but you've got a problematic area right there with the creek running through the middle of it, and all. It's not going to be pretty and pie-shaped and cookie-cutter lot, so.
Now, they are, on the backside of these lots, they are providing access easements from the subdivision, the Scottish Drive and Roxburg Drive. They are providing access easements to both Lot One and Lot Two for maintenance purposes back in this area, because, I mean, you're right, they are part of the lot, and are part of the ownership of that lot, but there's really no way to access it from this side.
Yeah, we don't want to encourage somebody to be driving through the creek with a tractor or bushel or something like that.
Right, no, no. So, that's right, and that's the purpose of the easements on the backside.
So, really, the only buildable on two and one, you can only really build by... City boundaries, just all around these, this proposed subdivision, comment on why they didn't ask for incorporation?
Well, actually, this area, if you recall our comments from the February meeting, this area is within that disputed annexation area. If this is ever settled, this will probably, this will be in the city limits, but at this point, I have no idea when that might happen, but currently, it's still within our jurisdiction, which is why we're looking at it.
Okay. Ready for a motion?
Well, Ben, this is basically the same thing we saw before, but actually cleaned up a little bit more than it was. I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion?
This is for the preliminary? Okay.
I don't know how you lock down the wording on it, but Lot Number Six is not going to like that at some point in time. But I don't know how you lock down the wording on it.
I mean, at this point, I think the only suggestion I would make, Mr. Lynch, is, you know, the engineer will work, again, we still want to see a plat note on here, but just something to the extent that, you know, this is part of Lot Six, however, it's common area and will be maintained by the homeowner's association, and Lot Six understands that. I mean, that's pretty much all we can ask them to put on the plat.
Maybe you answered this question. Lot Number Seven, I'm assuming, is the detention lot that we talked about?
Yes, sir.
And maybe you answered it. I just wasn't listening, but who owns that? Who's responsible for it? And are there taxes paid on that lot?
Well, the lot will be, again, over to the homeowner's association. I don't know how the taxes are handled for those particular lots.
I think if they own the property, somebody would get a tax bill.
Somebody would have to, you'd think.
That's a question that I haven't been asked before, but what I can do is check with Mr. Mitchell over and see how they're handling that and get back to you in the next meeting.
Thank you. Other questions? Ready to vote? We have a motion to approve. All who is in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Item number seven is the exact same thing, except final.
Yes, sir. As you stated, it is the same thing. Again, the biggest comment that we had regarding this is that these, that the plat recording these common area lots for the Scottish Glen subdivision, which are in the city limits, be recorded prior to this plat being recorded, also, and then the plat notes regarding the common area, and then the revised construction drawings, everything's identical to what we talked about before.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Not all who is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And that motion carries. Thank you. Staff reports. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. At this point, that's all the business we had regarding plats and plans. So, this was, this meeting was advertised as another work session for our subdivision regulations. You'll recall, at our last daytime meeting, we had our first work session on the draft subdivision regulations, and we discussed a number of issues, I would say most of which, I think, the Commission was comfortable with. There still are a few outstanding issues, and I know that there's a number of people in the audience that have an interest in some of the discussions we're having today. So, you'll see that we passed out a memorandum to you dated, actually, with today's date regarding some of the changes and the comments that we've received from some of you, the Planning Commission. At this point, Mr. Chairman, if you want me to go item by item, I can certainly do that. If not, we can just, however you want me to move forward, I'll be more than happy to do it.
Thank you for putting me on the spot like that.
Sure.
Any preference from the Commission? We kind of went, if I'm not mistaken, we kind of went article by article. Is that what you prefer to do?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And that's fine, and that's what we'll do. Basically, what I'll do is, several of these here are really just kind of minor typographical issues, and I won't spend a whole lot of time discussing those. And the issues, I think, that will require more discussion, I'll just mention that, you know, we'll go through everything, and then, at the end, we'll start going through those issues that have a little more meat to them, if you will.
Okay. You have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, sir. In Article One, there was a small typo there that we took care of, inserting a word between a couple of other words. That was really the biggest thing that was found, at least that was relayed to us in Article One. Article Two, one of the questions we received, well, what happens when an applicant is a corporation or something similar? Who does notice go out to? Our response was adding the language in that particular section, and let me, let me do this. Just bear with me a second. I'm going to go ahead and remote into my computer. Let me just go ahead and go through it as we go. Too far, didn't I? Just bear with me a second here. Just got to get back to, I went a little too far.
While Doug is getting that in order, I had a question. I said, "We've got several people in the audience that are either developers or people you see faces at different times. Are we going to take comments, or open this up, or anything, or are they just watching TV at home?"
As a Commission, as a Commission, that's up to you. Now, this was not advertised as a public hearing. However, I don't think it'd be inappropriate, when we start discussing a couple of the issues, I think, I know what they're here for, when we start discussing those, to hear from them, to, you know, have the discussion on that. So, I think it would be appropriate at that point for someone to suspend the rules to allow them to speak.
Personally, if somebody takes the time out of day to come be involved, I'd like to hear what they're here for, myself.
Let's go ahead and have a motion to suspend the rules for public input.
I'm ready.
Second.
Second. All who is in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
We're ready to go.
Very good. This first item, or second item, really, what happens when an applicant, corporation, or something similar, we added some language right in here under general. Basically, what we did was, we added this particular language right here. "If an applicant is a corporation, LLC, or some similar organization, a contact person shall be identified on the application materials." I think that's...
Doug, if that goes back to the comment that I had made under that section?
Yes, ma'am.
My concern was that as a planning commission, if we only see a corporation name, we may or may not know if a conflict of interest exists, or the appearance of a conflict of interest exists. So, in an effort to be transparent, I'd like to know who at least the named partners are in the corporation, so that I can avoid any, you know, appearance of impropriety.
So, as I'm hearing you say, that you want to add something to this, to the effect of, you know, the names of the partners shall be identified on the application?
Yeah, I mean, I don't exactly what the right wording is. Maybe you can get with Josh and figure out, you know, exactly how it needs to be worded, but I don't know if it's just partners, or if it's, you know, significant investors, or who, but I just, I would never want somebody to come up after the fact and say, "You voted for something, and out of complete innocence, we didn't realize that there was somebody involved, and we should have."
Okay.
That could be taken by either way, though. I mean, I'd want to get to, I'd want to get Josh's input on that personally, because then again, it could be saying, "We just approved one, RZM, developer," and I don't have a clue that, and I don't need to know who that is, because that could be coming back and saying, "Well, you're handling it different according to who it is." You know, that could be good or bad. And just because it's somebody we're familiar with, or somebody we're not familiar with, we can't treat anybody differently up here, so I'd want...
That's a good point. I'd like to hear what Josh has to say.
How do you handle those situations where you've got a big national company, corporation that comes in? How do you list their principal or stockholder?
And I'm not saying every single person there, but I just, I mean, in all fairness, I just want to be transparent. I just want to know, like, for example, I used to work for Prudential Rowland Real Estate. When the Rowlands were developing property, Mr. Rowland couldn't have picked me out of a lineup, but when things came before this committee, because I knew he was involved, I wouldn't vote on it. If I hadn't known, again, because I don't know him, he doesn't know me, but somebody could have looked at that and said, "Hey, she's voting for that because she works for that guy." He didn't know who I was, you know, and I might not have known he was involved. So, that's all I'm just trying to do, is make sure.
All right. Well, what I've done is...
You want to get Josh's?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
You want to let Josh comment on that?
Please.
Oh, there he is.
Can I go?
Yeah.
Could you come up to the podium, actually, because the mics won't be able to catch you all the way there, sorry.
I guess my comments are these. The, obviously, we're into a policy issue, I guess, which is one for you guys to decide, how do you want to handle it. But at the same time, it's worth recognizing that we can't, don't deal with the entities wholesale, because it matters what type of entity you've got, and how that organization is in place. So, obviously, if you've got an individual, that's one situation. If you've got a partnership, that's a different situation. If you've got an LLC, that's yet a different situation, and if you have a corporation, that's a yet another situation. And where you want to draw the line is really a decision that I think you guys need to make. What's going to be most important is that you know that the person that is signing on behalf of the applicant, where it is an entity, has the authority to sign and on behalf of that entity, and the ability to bind that entity. So, obviously, if it's an individual, that's an easy, that's an easy question to answer. If it's a partnership, it could be somewhat more complicated in that you may have a partnership with two or more partners, and only one person within that partnership has the legal authority to sign on behalf of that partnership. And unless you're getting some documentation that underlies the partnership, you may not know that from the face of the signature. With a limited liability company, you may have a managing member who's got authority to sign. You may have a particular member who's got authority to sign. You may, you can even have a scenario with an LLC where any of the members may have authority to sign and bind that LLC. With a corporation, typically, whoever is the president would have the authority to sign, but theoretically, a corporation could have a resolution that authorizes some other individual to sign on its behalf and bind it. For example, a public company was brought up a minute ago, you know, it may be the Director of Land Development out of Wichita, Kansas, that's got the authority to bind that company on land development issues. So, probably the bigger question is, does the person who's signing have the authority to sign, more so than the question, can we figure out who all the players are, unless you want to know who all the players are for ethical concerns and conflict concerns. I don't know how you're going to figure that out, where you have a big company or something like that involved, where you may have lots of owners. One thing you might consider is requiring an applicant to submit appropriate documentation to the Planning Department, to evidence that the person that's signing as the applicant, or on behalf of the applicant, has authority to sign on behalf of the applicant, and to some extent, then Doug would have some discretion on deciding whether or not that paperwork that's been submitted is adequate. So, it may be in the form of a resolution. It may be, you know, who knows what it might be, but that would give you some assurance that you've got the right person binding the applicant. If you're going to require some sort of designation of membership or ownership, I guess you could do that, but you're going to have to think about treating those different entities differently, and you're going to have some different standard if it's a publicly-held company, because you can't, you're not going to be able to get all those folks. So, anyway, that's my two cents.
My concern was strictly about conflicts of interest, because nobody trusts anybody in public service.
Right.
And anybody would love to, you know, splash about a big gotcha. I just want to try to figure out a way to avoid that.
Right. I think that from the, from the purely legal, ethical standpoint, the applicant is the applicant. In other words, an LLC, if the LLC is the applicant and owns the property, that is who you're looking to. So, the question would be, do you have a conflict with that LLC? In the technical sense, that would be the question. I think, as a practical matter, if a, if a company is the applicant, and there's reason to believe that there may be ownership behind it, that could raise some question, you could always ask that when you're, when you're here at a meeting. But, again, to have a conflict, you're going to have to have a conflict with the applicant, and an LLC or corporation is legally distinct from the, from its owners. And so, that's really who you're analyzing. Now, from a public perception standpoint, what I'm saying is probably irrelevant, but I think legally, it matters.
That was my concern.
Anything else?
I guess you undo the change, undo the highlight.
No, no problem.
I'll refer those questions to Josh when they come in.
Well, I did, I did like the point he mentioned about having Doug verify that whoever's signing is actually a representative, and in that point, Doug kind of has the freedom to ask questions, who, you know, who's putting this deal together, that he could share with us. But I liked the verification note that Josh put.
I think that would be wise.
Yeah.
I was under the impression we already did that. I mean, somebody comes in and wants to rezonate a piece of property that they're representing the owner. I would think we'd get something in writing to document that person has the authorization to do that, and we probably have for years.
Yeah, and a lot of the time, if somebody's making an application, like if someone's trying to purchase the property, and they haven't bought the property yet, you know, we make them, there's a form, we call it's an attorney-in-fact form, that they fill out, that the owner of the property has to stamp, that basically says, "Yes, I'm giving this person permission to make application to the Planning Commission for rezoning," or especially whatever they're asking for.
So, that procedure like this one just belongs in your policy?
I think so. Yeah, I don't think it just has to be spelled out in the regulations, but I think that's, I mean, to an extent, it already is, because we put up here in this language right here, "The owner of the property or designated attorney-in-fact here and after applicant shall upon payment of applicable fees," on and on, so we already do kind of have it in there. Okay, moving on to, excuse me, the third, I guess that'd be the second full page, B1C. That's this area right through here. There was a question regarding whether the granting of an easement for public utilities that serve only a single lot, but dead ends, doesn't cross a lot but dead ends on a property, does not change a minor subdivision or a partition to a major. As I understood that, I think what they, the question was, had to deal with, you know, private extension of lines just to serve that one lot, not so much trunk lines or anything like that. And if that's the case, then the answer to that question is no. Now, we did clarify that a little bit here under C. You can see the declaration, the dedication of a right-of-way easement, construction in public utilities excluding private service lines. I would add that TCA 133401 does specifically state that utility construction does not include the mere extension of individual service pipes or lines for the purpose of directly connecting a single lot site or other division to existing utility mains. So, I'm glad to clarify that. I think it helps quite a bit, but just so the Commission's aware, just because you're extending some lines from a trunk line to serve a single lot, that doesn't fall under the term of utility construction for the purpose of plating a subdivision. So, I think that clarifies that. B1D, we did make that next change there, the insure to ensure, the I to the E. The next comment had to deal with subsurface disposal systems, septic tanks, does it conclude both primary and backup service lines? I think that the language was broad enough that it could include both. However, we did clarify that. I'm trying to see. I think that's actually in Article Three. Regardless, we did, we did clarify that to say both primary and existing sites. The next comment had to deal with crawl spaces. I think I'm actually in Article Three now. Okay, I'm, this is dealing with the preliminaries, construction plans. I'm sorry, I'm kind of lost here at the moment. We'll just kind of start going through this, and I'll catch up with myself here in just a minute. Crawl spaces, what about cellars and basements, dealing with flood issues and the flood areas that, areas of periodic... Dealing with, uh, flood issues and the flood areas that, areas of periodic inundation. Uh, the original section mentioned crawl spaces, but didn't mention anything about basements. Uh, we did agree that basements should be included there. So we did add a definition for basements in our definition section, which is consistent with the definition that's found in the zoning ordinance, uh, especially regarding flood areas. Uh, actually FEMA, there's a separate definition in the flood section of the zoning ordinance that deals specifically with basements. We've used that, and so we have clarified that. Uh, there was also a question about commercial, industrial, or other non-residential developments. That comment had to deal with, uh, the accessory buildings on lots. And I believe the question was that applied to residential as well. Uh, the quick answer to that question was it actually applies to everything and that regulation really shouldn't have been there to begin with. So we've just deleted it. So the flood issue, the flood regulations that we do have apply to the principal and also the accessory structures as well. Uh, since it conflicts with FEMA, we went and took that out. The next question had to deal with the trees on lots or on preliminary plans, I think is what it was. Okay. I think I'm caught back up with myself here. There it is. Okay. Here's that section right here, dealing with existing trees and tree masses. Be, uh, further clarify, the state only trees and tree masses are intended to be preserved, be listed on a preliminary plan. I think that was staff's intent all along, although it wasn't stated as such. So we've, as you can see, we've amended that. Say existing significant trees and tree masses to be preserved. Uh, you know, our intent wasn't to have a tree survey, if you will, of every tree that's on a particular piece of property. So we're really, we're just concerned of those that they were looking to preserve. So we have clarified that. There was a issue as well under the construction plans. Let's see, H-3, dealing with the roadside ditch profiles. And I thought, Ms. Corby, you want to address that now, or do you want to?
Yeah, the, um, the comment was, um, you can't see how the ditch profiles provide a use, but in doing construction, it's extremely helpful to us. One thing is we have to make sure that the ditch is not so deep that it gets outside of the right-of-way. Uh, there have been cases where, uh, a road will one, run one direction. The ditch actually runs a different direction, which means you got to, we need to profile that ditch because it gets deeper, it gets further. And so, uh, the, we get spot shots in those ditches to, again, to make sure that the water is running appropriately. And it's extremely helpful to, uh, to the engineering staff when we're doing these, to get these profiles. And so, uh, our intent is to keep the, in the, in the regulation.
Okay, moving on from there. Uh, the next item had to deal with the driveway being a minimum of one foot above a hundred-year flood plan, flood plain. Uh, you know, the cost of having a long driveway to properly raise the driveway one foot. Uh, it says the driveway should be permitted to be at the hundred-year level or higher. Uh, after we looked at this, this particular regulation, we actually meant to delete that in the draft to begin with. And we were, we were going to take that out. So it was just in there by accident. So we went ahead and removed that requirement. Also, along those lines, a 25-foot wide yard surrounding the footprint of a house at or above the hundred-year flood plain. It's reasonable for lots with large side yards. However, in areas with a 10-foot side setback or drainage easement swells down a property line, it would make it, uh, make it difficult and possible to, to comply with that. Uh, the 25-foot requirement, as we understand, it comes directly from FEMA. And while we do agree that the, it would be easier for larger lots to meet that particular regulation, we also feel that proper subdivision design can accommodate that and that, you know, it's not something that would come up after the plating of the property, uh, would occur. You know, that's something that should be taken into account as the property is being platted, you know, during the subdivision review process. That's something they should catch on the front end. So that's kind of why that's, particular revision is in place.
Could you just say what you said again, Doug?
I'm sorry.
A lot of something.
Right, no, you're fine. The staff's response basically is that while it is easier for a larger lot to comply with the 25-foot area surrounding the footprint, you know, kind of building the house up just a little bit. On smaller lots, I think it's incumbent upon the person designing the subdivision that they go ahead and design it with that regulation in mind. In other words, they wouldn't try to create the lot knowing full well that this is there, but not take it into account. So with proper subdivision design, they should be able to do a lot that would accommodate that requirement and not have to, you know, face a hardship after the lot's already been platted.
Well, that means there won't be any ditches between lots with a narrow setback. You know, they'll have to go pipe underground or something like that because 25 feet is going to get you to the next house.
Well, again, depending on the design of the subdivision, you know, that lot could just be a little larger than the typical minimum 15,000.
They may not be that narrow where they're in the flood plain.
Right.
Right. Or they could handle it with the piping, but they still have to...
They can't have a ditch.
Right.
Doug, did you mean to skip over the, that first paragraph under Article 3, the 3D, 3C?
Uh, no, actually, I didn't, I'm sorry. Is that what you were trying to tell me?
Yeah.
Sorry. Uh, that, that particular, uh, that particular regulation deals with the sprinklers. Uh, no, I, my recommendation was going to be wait, wait till we go through the rest of these to get to this because I think this will be one of those that, um, has a lot of discussion. But did I deliberately do that at that point? No, I, I just got lost in my documents. I apologize. So, but we will come back to that, that first point there and all subdivisions. We will talk about that. Uh, Dale, you want to do the next couple around here?
Yeah, 3H. We got a, a comment that, uh, said, "Recent revisions allow will follow Nashville and T.D. regs." And the question was, has anyone read these regs? And in fact, we have read through them several times and we've been using the regs, um, as a basis for our, our subdivision regs since 96, I believe. I mean, and so, uh, then it says, "Is the origin of the requirement, the first inch of rain, is this where it came from?" And the answer to that is no. The, the requirement for retention, retain the first inch of rain comes out of, uh, our stormwater program, which comes from EPA under the Clean Water Act. And we signed our permit three years ago indicating that we would comply with this. In fact, if we do not comply, then we're under, uh, possibility of being fined and stuff. So the requirement for that one inch of rain to retain it is, even though the comment here is onerous, uh, says, "I was told by one of the coach directors, such a rule effect eliminates the ability to wash your car." I don't know about the specific veracity of that, of that particular statement, but we really are required to adopt this particular rule and we don't have, uh, the option. I suppose you do have the option, but if you do, you face the very distinct possibility of being fined by both the state and EPA for non-compliance with the stormwater program. Uh, number 3HF, states, "The design engineer must evaluate the next two downstream structures for development, make sure it can handle post-construction flows." Uh, if you remember, we had a study, uh, that we contracted back in the early 2000s to look at the, uh, East Fork of the Stones River. One of the recommendations I studied is that we have people look at the next two structures downstream to make sure they can handle the flow. Uh, we adopted that policy at the time. Uh, the question is, if the, the post-development rates can't exceed pre-development, why require the expensive downstream structure evaluation? Again, it gets back to the fact that, uh, even though you're putting a subdivision in, uh, and they meet these requirements, you still could have problems downstream and that, that we need to repair those, replace them or whatever. So we decided to, they have to look at the next two structures downstream. If they can't handle the flows, they have to repair them. And that's where that particular rule came from. It was out of that study we had early in the early 2000s. We get down into, uh, surety bond, which was the next statement. Said, "The word 'non-expiring' is used, correct word is 'auto-renewing.'" We agree with that, so we've changed that to auto-renewing. Uh, expiration of surety under 4F says, "Would permits be denied to innocent third-party purchaser in lots of this subdivision which had a bond lapse?" The language in section, "Permits will not be issued to all improvements completists." And what we're putting in here, we, we've got some new language in here that we're trying to, uh, put in to handle the situations we ran into from 2008 on, where we had some of our subdivision developers go bankrupt. We've actually had a case recently where the, the bankrupt developer had a bond. We've been in the process of trying to call that bond. The bond company has recently got in touch with us and told us, "We don't feel responsible for, sue us." So now we're going to have to go through a, probably a court case to get our bond, which was supposed to carry, cover that subdivision at the same time. So what we're putting this in here for is if we have a company, bank, whatever, that reneges or goes back on their responsibility for the bond or letter of credit, that we put a situation in here where they can't be used for a period of five years. And it gets back to the history of what we're dealing with currently with some of our subdivision.
Dale?
Yes.
So, I mean, is the question answered? Or are you going to be able to prevent an innocent third-party buyer of a lot in a subdivision that the developer failed? Are you going to be able to prevent them from building a home?
Uh, the, we've looked at the situation. Of course, we can't prevent the sale of the lot because we don't own it. And, uh, we've also made the decision, policy decision, if the construction is currently underway in a subdivision and they buy it, that we will allow them to build the house. Does that answer your question?
To, if another person had bought before this developer goes bankrupt, they cannot build on that, they cannot build a home on that lot.
Yes, they can.
Oh, they can build a home.
They can build a home on that lot.
What was the five-year clause you talked about?
The clause we're trying to put in is if we have a...
It's right here.
"An interest company whose past performance has resulted in non-payment of bond may be excluded from providing a surety bond for any owner or development for a period of five years from the date of breach."
Just a couple other items in here before we start hitting the, the ones that we, we know will take a little more discussion. Uh, there was a typographical error in the appendix and the certifications. We've made that change. Well, the next item, street elements, uh, we'll skip that one for now because I know there'll be some more discussion on that regarding the, the sidewalk and the two-foot grass strip and all that. Uh, we'll, we'll discuss that here in a little bit. We've got some photos here to show you for that as well. Uh, there was also a small typographical error there in the first paragraph under signs, uh, we've taken care of. Uh, the handout that we provided with the document last week, or last daytime meeting, there was a, there was a statement made about the, the numbering getting conformed, the numbering used in the proposed subdivision regulations. Uh, we will make sure that that's all resolved prior to the final draft and public hearing. Right now, we're just kind of keeping up all the changes as we go. We know there'll be some, some differences in the numbering from the draft you have versus the draft we're looking at on the screening right now. We understand that, but that will be taken care of before that. Uh, the next item had to do with drainage easements. "For all detention facilities shall extend a minimum 25 feet to the outer limits of pond perimeter."
Yeah, the question was, is that excessive? And based on the experience that we've had in dealing with, we don't feel excessive. In fact, we need the, the room. When you get a piece of equipment in there and you start moving around and you're moving dirt, you've got a place to put the dirt and stuff. And so if you try to keep it in 10-foot, there's just not enough, uh, there's not enough room for, to doing the work. And so the reason we have that in there is to allow us to have enough room if you actually, when you actually do the maintenance, to get in there and do the work without having to require additional ma, uh, right-of-way at that time.
That kind of goes through the, just, I would, I mean, they're not, not minor in the sense that they're not important, but the minor in the sense that the changes that were made didn't take a, a lot of, uh, time on staff's part. But there are some issues that do remain. And I think the first one to speak about would be going back to the, uh, the comment regarding sprinkler systems. Again, that, that's that one in Article 3, begins in all subdivisions. I'll pull that up here. I think we can go ahead and start talking about, about that. Okay. Starts right here. Okay, as you recall, under our current subdivision regulations, there is a requirement in there that deals with, uh, you know, fire hydrants, first of all, being within 1,000 feet of all properties. Also, in the event that a waiver is required in all major subdivisions, if there is a waiver required from the subdivision requirement, then the lots in that major subdivision have to be, well, the, the houses built have to be sprinkled, uh, with fire sprinkler systems based on the criteria. What we did, based on some of the discussion that we had as planning commission, some of the waiver requests we've seen, especially on larger tracts of land off of private easements, where you may have a situation where the house is half a mile off the road and it's simply not practical to extend a line that far back that could support the fire flows necessary for a fire hydrant. Uh, we've changed that wording from major subdivisions to all subdivisions. This, that's the proposal that, that staff has presented this time and that's right here in this particular, uh, requirement here. There was a, we had some discussion regarding this at our last work session. Since that time, I've had some discussions with some of the folks from the Home Builders Association, uh, which several of them are here today to, uh, to, also to kind of relay their concerns to you and for further discussion. So with that, that's just kind of a, a brief overview of that. I will say that besides this change right here that I have highlighted, where we went from, uh, major subdivisions to all, let me just, like that, to all subdivisions, everything else that you see here is identical to what's in our current subdivision regulations, with the exception of major being changed to all. We just copied it right over from our existing regulations. So I know we've had some discussion. I know that there's going to be more discussion on that. So at this point, I'll be here and happy to answer any questions that you may have. But I know, again, that there are several people here that would like to speak on, in regards to that.
So if I understand in its simplicity, you're, you're suggesting that if they, if we waive a fire hydrant or if a fire hydrant can't be supported, then any subdivision has to be sprinkled?
That's correct.
Okay.
Now, you'll notice here at the very bottom, uh, on Number 3, says, "The requirements of this subsection shall not apply to existing residential structures located in a proposed subdivision." Sometimes we do consider subdivisions where someone will have a tract of land and they're just looking to track off a couple acres where an existing house is. We would not require them to go back and be retrofitted, okay, based on the language. And again, that's current in our regulations now. We don't require that now. We're not proposing to require it if this goes through as presented. But any new houses that would be built would have to meet that requirement. Again, only if they're asking for the waiver to the fire hydrant requirement. If they can put fire hydrants there, then if they want to put them there, that's certainly their prerogative, but we're not going to require that. Only time we do require it is if that waiver is granted for fire hydrant requirements.
All right, so if you have subdivisions that have multiple phases and let's say the first three phases are already complete and a year down the road, Phase 4 comes along, the, the new houses are not grandfathered, the new phase is not grandfathered with the old phase, correct? The new...
Correct. I think that, I think that's accurate. Uh, now, under the new regulations, we would see a preliminary plan, which would have to kind of show us the utility layouts and all that. So that item should already be taken care of on the front end. But we run into situations sometimes where a new section will be added to a subdivision that wasn't part of the original master plan. In that situation, I think you're right, Mr. Kusch, that, uh, at, at that point, that would be kind of treated as a standalone. Even if it's considered part of the overall subdivision, it would be treated, you know, on its own merits.
And this is for houses or lots that come within more than 1,000 feet from a hydrant?
More than 1,000 feet and they cannot...
Regardless of how big the lot is, because...
Right, right.
Because the house could be sitting on a 100-acre lot and it could be 3,000 feet off the road. But the lot comes out, there's a hydrant and a 1,000-feet lot, so that's...
That, that makes the regulation...
That's a whole nother argument for another time.
Right, but that, but that, that situation you just described, if the lot itself is within 1,000 feet of the hydrant, then that technically does meet the regulations.
That does meet the regulations.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Anyone here, anyone here like to make a comment or ask a question? Please come up.
Please come up.
Good morning. My name is Steve Jensen. I'm owner of Jensen Quality Homes, and I'm the president of the Rutherford County Home Builders Association. I'm here today representing our 157 builder members who work, live, and have businesses here in Rutherford County, and the people that are associated with the home building industry. I'm here today to talk about residential fire sprinklers. I'm not a lobbyist. I don't have special interest money behind me. I'm simply one of your neighbors who lives and works here in the community. Before I begin, though, I must point out that almost exactly one year ago, on April 27th, 2012, the Tennessee State Legislature, after extensive committee review and study, passed a bill which specifically says, and I quote, "Mandatory sprinkler requirements shall be voted on in an ordinance or resolution separate from any other ordinance or resolution addressing building construction safety standards." If those of, if those who wanna force us to put sprinklers, force sprinklers onto our community are trying to do it through these subdivision rules, I believe that it would be in violation of state law. But I'm here today to challenge the need for mandatory sprinklers however you're considering them. I understand there are some very powerful special interest groups involved in this issue, and they're trying to make us do something that would be very detrimental to our community. Proverbs 18:17 says, "The one who first states a case seems right until the other comes and cross-examines." I know that the National Sprinkler Association has been working hard presenting their case with millions of dollars to back their efforts, but have we actually considered the actual facts? At the November 26th Planning Commission meeting, you were given some answers to important questions. I watched the tape. You guys asked really good questions about sprinklers. Unfortunately, the answers given weren't entirely correct. I'm not here to simply quote my biased numbers that support my position. Rather, most of my information comes from two primary sources. One, an analysis, an analysis of civilian residential fire deaths in Tennessee, 2002 to 2010, done by the University of Tennessee. And my second source is cost effectiveness of fire sprinkler equipment done by the Department of Commerce and Insurance, May 14th, 2010. I've been struggling with trying to figure out why, why we would even consider forcing people in our community to install fire sprinklers. It is completely obvious why the National Fire Sprinkler Association wants us to, but I can't figure out why exactly we're considering it. In recent conversation, the issue was referred to as, quote, "A noble cause. We understand the desire for hydrants and sprinklers. It's a noble cause." Please humor me just for a moment. Right now, in your own mind, answer this question. Why? What is the main cause for requiring a new home to have a sprinkler? What is our motive? What is the impetus for, quote, "This noble cause"? I'm a custom builder, and as such, I'm very market-driven. I do what my customers want. If they want a theater room, I give them a theater room. If they want a storm shelter, I'll put a storm shelter in. If they want a fire sprinkler, I'll give them a fire sprinkler. The problem with fire sprinklers is nobody wants them, but I'll address this later. So I'm still asking why? Why would we even consider forcing people to do it? I asked one of the commissioners in this question, and his answer was, "Sprinklers would give people a little more time to get out. It would help save people if there weren't fire hydrants close by." So maybe this is the noble reason. Maybe this is how the camel gets his nose in the tent, to help save people, to buy them a little more time. I have to ask why our state legislature specifically removes sprinklers from the building codes, but now we're being asked to make them mandatory? We all know that how sprinklers got in the code, the Sprinkler Fire Association forced it in, but our state legislators removed it. So again, why are we now considering forcing it on people? What could motivate us to require an additional $3,000 plus on every new home? To give people who aren't close to a fire hydrant a little more time to get out? So perhaps we've been led to believe it's a life safety issue. Why else force such a huge burden on every new home? As I understand it, the question we're being, you are being forced to consider is related to fire hydrants. If there isn't a fire hydrant nearby, we need to force people to spend $3,000 plus on their new home. So if perchance their house is the one in 25,000 to catch fire, they will have a little more time to get out. Is this really our why? Let me provide the proverbial cross-examination. First of all, why would we tie this requirement of sprinklers to how far away a fire hydrant is? If we think it is so important that we are going to increase the cost of every new home $3,000 or more, and our reasoning is sprinklers give homeowners a little more time to get out, why not require it on every new home, regardless of how far away it is from a fire hydrant? A fire hydrant in my front yard isn't gonna give me any more time to get out than one a mile down the road. Our local fire department has excellent response times, but I really need to be out of the house by the time they get there. If this is our reason, it really doesn't tie to fire hydrants. Secondly, sprinklers don't buy occupants more time, plain and simple. A residential fire sprinkler is designed to go off between 134 and 160 degrees, depending on the type and model. Do you remember the last time your smoke detector went off? Wasn't a lot of smoke in your house. That's a good thing. Smoke detectors give us advance warning. Advance warning is what buys us time to get out of the house. The last time you smoked alarm off, how hot would you estimate it was at the ceiling? The fact is that by the time the temperature at the sprinkler head reaches 134, especially on the wide-open design plans that we're building today, the house has long been filled with smoke, and the occupants probably are overcome. Let me take another line of reasoning. In fact, if in fact, we are concerned about saving lives, so much so that we have reasoned that it's worth $3,000 plus on each new home, because we've been told that the risk of dying in a house fire in Rutherford County is so high that we, that our best option is to force people to put sprinklers in, I have to ask, are sprinklers the best option? The handout that you were given on the March 25th meeting, created by the Fire Sprinkler Initiative, a project of the National Fire Protection Association, which is a nationwide effort to require the use of homes' fire sprinklers for new construction, said in its opening line, quote, "Fire in the home poses one of the biggest threats to the people of your community." Is this true? Are we basing our decision to require every new home in Rutherford County to have a sprinkler on this statement? Let me ask this. How many fire-related deaths have there been in Tennessee, not just in Rutherford County, but the entire state, in the last five years? The study by the University of Tennessee, done independently to study the effects of sprinklers, not conducted by the Fire Sprinkler Association, found that there hasn't been a single fire-related death in a home in Tennessee that was built to current codes which required interconnected fire detectors, or smoke alarms. The opposition, when we fought this at the state level, contended that there was one death, but the study by the University of Tennessee said there weren't any. So perhaps one death, and I don't wanna negate that or diminish that. But put this in perspective. How many tornado-related deaths have there been in the state of Tennessee, in the state of Tennessee in the last five years? There's been 103. So how does the statement then, "Fire in the home poses one of the biggest threats to the people of your community," make sense? If we are basing our decision on life safety issues and feel strong enough about it to force every new home to have a sprinkler, why not require everyone to also have a tornado shelter? Since the 2009 Good Friday tornado here in Murphysboro, I have offered my customers the option of installing a tornado shelter. In the last four years, only two customers have opted not to. And they are, and a shelter costs about the same as a sprinkler system, if not more. This, ladies and gentlemen, is how the free market is supposed to work. I'm not advocating that we force every new home to have a tornado shelter, any more than I think we should force them to have a sprinkler. Smart people in our community, your neighbors and mine, make their own decisions about what they want to spend their money on, and whether or not to spend it on options in the home. This is the real problem. People correctly assess the risk and choose not to install sprinklers. This is not good for the Fire Sprinkler Association, so they lobby hard to make us force people to put them in. Again, I have to ask why? Maybe our main reason isn't actually saving lives. Maybe our main concern is saving property. However, at the November 26th meeting of the Planning Commission, we were told that it wasn't about property damage, it was about life safety. The study by the Department of Commerce and Insurance found that the average cost of damage from a house fire was $19,000. The average cost of damage in a house with a fire sprinkler was $14,000. This is on page 21 of that report. So we begin, so we are being asked to force our neighbors in Rutherford County to spend $3,000 plus to save $5,000 in damage, should their house be one of the ones that catches What about water damage? What if a sprinkler line in an attic freezes or breaks? What about maintenance? What about fraud associated with sprinklers? The insurance companies are good at determining arson, but what if someone wants a new kitchen? They hit the sprinkler and call their insurance agent for water damage. I've talked to a lot of homeowners, neighbors of yours, about sprinklers, and anecdotally, they are more worried about water damage from fire sprinklers than they are from fire. You may be thinking that homeowners will save money on their insurance, so forcing them to put sprinklers in actually saves them money. In 2000, in a 2010 study done by the Department of Commerce and Insurance, presented to the General Assembly, it was reported the insurance savings for a home with sprinklers compared to a home without sprinklers was $12. So without any maintenance costs, it will take 250 years to pay for a sprinkler system before I actually save that money. Funny how one side sounds good until someone cross-examines it. Yes, sprinklers will save you money on your home insurance, but it will take 250 years before you see that savings. I believe that all of us intuitively know the risks involved. People assess the risk and rightly realize the odds of their house catching on fire. I've wondered why my customers choose tornado shelters over sprinklers and have to come to this conclusion. We all know that we can't outrun a tornado. We all know that tornadoes impact more homes than house fires, and we know that we can run out of the house if our smoke detector goes off. In closing, we simply have to ask ourselves why? Why did our state legislature remove mandatory sprinklers from the residential building codes? Why did the governor take sprinklers out of the code statewide? And why have 32 other states across the country removed them from the building code? And why, actually, are we being asked to force it upon our neighbors? The Biased Sprinkler Association has said, "Fire in the home poses one of the biggest threats to the people of your community." Noble cause, but not factual. The solution, if we are concerned about saving lives from residential fires, is to upgrade smoke detectors. Newer technology provides for early warning for multiple types of fire. If we really think not having a fire hydrant close to our home is a huge threat to our community, then let's put in newer smoke detectors, at a cost of about $150, not $3,000 plus. Smoke detectors are a much better solution. Sprinklers don't ultimately save lives, property, or money. In a statewide survey conducted by the University of Tennessee, it was revealed, and I quote, "Most fire chiefs thought the single best approach to reducing fire deaths was to ensure all structures, residential included, have working smoke fire alarms." So I ask you, what's so unique, what's so different about our neighbors and our community that we think differently? The Rutherford County Home Builders Association respectfully asks that you consider the facts, not the politics or the special interests involved in this decision. Based on current state law, changing the current subdivision rules to include mandatory sprinklers requires a totally separate process. I'm here today to ask you, since sprinklers don't save lives or significant property damage, that you change the new rules to not require sprinklers in any residential homes. This would align with our state legislature, what, this would align with what our state legislature concluded after much research, and could be done along with the process of approving the new subdivision rules. To sum up, sprinklers don't save lives, smoke detectors do. Sprinklers don't give people more time to get out, smoke detectors do. Sprinklers don't significantly reduce the amount of damage done in a house fire. Sprinklers simply add to the cost of a new home, and the option to install them should be left up to the homeowner, not mandated by special interest groups. Thank you.
Any other?
These special interest groups he refers to is, I'm a member of the Tennessee Fire Chiefs Association, and this special interest group he's referring to is the firemen and the fire chiefs all across the state of Tennessee.
Could you tell us who you are?
My name is Larry Farley. I'm the Rutherford County Fire Chief. Excuse me. If sprinklers don't save lives, why are they in this building? The Great Chicago Fire, a lot of the hotels you stay in all have sprinkler systems. Well, if they don't save lives, then why are they put in all these commercial buildings? I can promise you and tell you that Tennessee is number two in the nation for fire deaths. And believe me, when you pulled an eight-year-old boy in a body bag out of a fire because he burned up, we had a lady out on Rehoboth Road that burned up here two weeks ago. Within two weeks, there was like 18 people in the state of Tennessee died in house fires. So I don't know where this gentleman gets his statistics. I don't worry, he believes that the State Commerce and Insurance, which is the Fire Marshal's Office, will sit there and tell you all day long that fire sprinklers save lives. And they also, I think, save property. Smoke alarms do save lives, but sprinklers will activate in one room, and I give y'all, I think I give all y'all tapes, the Mr. Demasi, talking about fire sprinklers and how low maintenance they are, how low cost they are. Of course, that's a decision y'all had to make, but it irritates me when people stand up here and when they're on special interest group. And the reason these have been taken out of the regulations is because of a great lobby across this nation by the home builders to, they don't wanna fool with it, are more concerned about profits over lives. And believe me, I guarantee you, you can ask any fire chief in the state of Tennessee, the Fire Marshal's Office in the Murphysboro, and they'll tell you that smoke, that fire sprinklers do indeed save lives, and they buy the person time. I guarantee you, if there was a fire in this building right here, right now, these fire sprinklers in this building would provide you time and ability to get out of this building safely, and it would keep the damage to a minimum. I mean, we have a volunteer system in this county, volunteer firefighters. The average response time could be anywhere from 10 to 12 minutes before a firefighter can even be on the scene. There's daytime, in the daytime, you may not have two or three firefighters that are available to even respond because of the volunteer system. It's just everybody has to work, everybody has to maintain a living. So at any given time, at any given day of this week, if you have a fire in the county, you may have 25 fires, you might have two, and then you might have nobody. So I ask you to use the information I provided you on the fire sprinklers. The Fire Sprinkler Association does have a lobby, but it's mandated and pushed by the Tennessee Fire Chiefs Association. It's pushed by the International Chiefs, Fire Chiefs Association, that they do save lives, and they, I believe they do save money. So, I mean, for people to sit there and say it doesn't is just totally not truth.
My sources were being questioned. I didn't make these numbers up. I'd be glad to give you the study by the University of Tennessee and the study by the Insurance Commission. I'm not making these numbers up, so I'd be glad to make copies for all of you to weed through the information yourselves.
Mr. Jensen, can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
As I, I'm very open-minded on this issue. And so as I listen to your argument, part of what I'm hearing is, if we don't require this, then we really shouldn't even consider having to require fire hydrants either. Is that, is that your position, that we don't need to consider fire hydrants as part of the infrastructure when we're determining whether or not a neighborhood should be built in a, you know, previously undeveloped area?
Well, I've only recently, I've been involved in the sprinkler issue for quite some time. I've only recently begun to learn about the issues of water source and that sort of thing. I think they're two issues. I can give you anecdotal information, which is just, you know, opinion. The, the, I think they're separate issues. I don't think forcing someone to put a fire sprinkler in, she, again, I have to ask, why are we forcing them? These sprinklers in this room, if there was a fire in this building, these sprinklers don't go off. So they're not buying me more time to get out of this room. The alarm that says there's a fire down the road, or three rooms over, when that alarm goes off, we all get up and leave this building. These sprinklers don't go off. These sprinklers don't go off. So that, it's a logic thing to me. Anecdotally, I live out in the country. There's not a fire hydrant or, and I don't have sprinklers. I called my insurance agent, how much would I save? I mean, all that's anecdotal. But people that, people that build in a county, the insurance companies rate their houses accordingly, what the risk is, they've done lots of analysis on what's the risk of that house catching on fire and stuff like that. And I don't, I don't see that, because there's not a fire hydrant, it's, what's the reason again? Is it the reason to tie it to the, a fire hydrant being close by to buy people the time to get out? Fire hydrants close to a house don't buy people time to get out either. I don't think, that, that's a, that's a different issue, which, you know, I don't have stats and statistics on. I understand some of the, just recently, issues of how much water the fire hydrant requires and the issues of potability with that water when you're out in the county and there's not a lot of houses that that fire hydrant is supporting. So I do think the issue of sprinklers and hydrants are two separate things, and I don't want to confuse them. The decision that's being made here has to, not here specifically, the issue that I'm addressing is the requirement in the new subdivision rules to require them. A, I don't think we can do it in the new subdivision rules because of state law, but I also, whether, whether we break it out and do it separately, I don't see the need to force people to do it. I'm gonna start, I started, as I said, this anecdotal, I started after the Good Friday tornadoes to offer storm shelters, and everybody has taken me up on them. I'm gonna start offering sprinklers. The, I've heard several presentations on the sprinklers, a lot of it is anecdotal. Some guy's barn burned down and he was building his house, and, well, I had a customer last year whose house burned to the ground, and I replaced, I built a new house for him. And I asked him, "Do you want sprinklers?" And he said, "No, I don't." I said, "Your house just burned down." He said, "No, I don't want..." So that's anecdotal, I want to deal with the facts. And so my challenge to you, who have to make this decision, is what, what's the reason that we're putting sprinklers in? Is it to save time? Do you believe that sprinklers save time for people to get out? Is it to save property damage? Do you save, do you believe that it saves property damage? What's the reason? And I didn't, I didn't come with an armload of, it's not about profits for me. If my customer wants a sprinkler, I'll put it in. But it is, it's an economic issue for our county, because every thousand dollars that you increase the cost of a house, and this not, there's a number, I don't have it, so I don't want to misquote it, but it's a huge number of people that you drive out of the market when you raise the price of a house by a thousand dollars. Sprinklers are $3,000 plus. It was quoted a couple months ago that sprinklers cost a dollar a square foot. That's not accurate. I gave you guys a handout from, again, those two reports. The average cost is a dollar 65. So there's just, it is an economic issue, but I, the bottom line for my argument is it should be left up to the homeowner to decide whether or not they want to put a sprinkler in.
Because I can give you a little bit of history of how this language originally got into the, into the document. Not the change that we're talking about making, but what exists there now, is that, you know, we have lots of rural parts of this county where developers want to develop subdivisions, and they can't support a fire hydrant. And so as we were looking for ways to say, okay, we don't want to devalue that land and tell you it's unbuildable land because you can't support a fire hydrant, so this seemed like the next logical step to say, okay, there should be, since we consider fire protection, at least on new developments, to be an infrastructure issue, this was a way of helping that developer be able to develop that land. So the way you're thinking, what, we shouldn't consider fire protection as an infrastructure issue, or? I just want to be clear on your position.
Yeah. Well, I don't, I don't see how the sprinkler, the fire protection is, are we looking at property damage?
Well, because I think, I think too, just I've listened carefully to kind of how you described your client base, it sounds like you're probably building on a higher end. When you say custom homes, I think of, you know, a nicer, more expensive home, that maybe your singular developments and not a neighborhood. When you have a neighborhood and these houses are very close together, I think there is a very real issue of a fire jumping from house to house, from rooftop to rooftop, and maybe those people don't get the same notice that they would get if the fire began inside their home. And so I just want to make sure we're looking at all angles with this.
Yeah. Well, I do, I am custom homes. The cost is, is gonna impact whether it's a small, smaller home or a larger home. And so what I hear, I think what you're, what you're saying is that we're looking at a property damage issue and trying to reduce property damage.
Well, I mean, it wouldn't just, I mean, it would be both. It would be properties and lives, because like I said, if it jumps rooftop to rooftop and the fire starts from the roof down, then, you know, are they, they're not gonna get the same notice they would get from...
I don't know, I'm just, yeah, yeah.
We're all anecdotal here, we're not experts in this.
And I guess my thinking on that would be, if my neighbor's house is on fire, I probably know about it. If it's on fire enough that it's gonna be spreading to my house, I probably know about it. So I've had, you know, the fire trucks are there if my neighbor's house...
And if it comes in from the roof, I don't know how effective the sprinkler's gonna be.
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm just trying to think through all the issues here, because I do think it's important for us to consider fire protection as an infrastructure issue, especially when we're looking at, you know, large-scale developments, so...
Yeah. And I'm reiterating, it is, I challenge us to think about what is the problem we're trying to solve. If it's property damage, the statistics say that, yes, fire sprinklers reduce the amount of damage, but by how much? It's like saying, yes, fire sprinklers reduce your home insurance. That's an accurate statement, but by how much? You were told at the November 28th meeting that it was a five-year payback. Well, as a builder, I'm thinking, okay, five-year payback, that's not bad. You know, now I can start to think, but it's not a five-year payback. Depending on, even, even the, using the numbers that you were given from, and that's what that handout does, even using those numbers, it's not a five-year payback. And so if it's a, if it's a 200-year payback, if you take the, a dollar 65 a square foot times a 2,500 square foot house by a $12 a year savings, that's 205 years. Or if it's, if it's 40 years, which is what my house, when I called my agent, 40 years before I saw the savings. So now I get to make that decision. You know, that's where I think, okay, do I want to sprinkle my house? It's a 40-year payout. That's where I think the decision should be made.
You didn't come back to her question, though, would you rather say no to development where it can't support a fire hydrant instead of giving the option for a sprinkler? Because our subdivision regulations say you have to have fire hydrants. So if we just back up and we drop the fire, the sprinkler thing, there's a whole lot of county out there that's non-developable. Is that what the home builders want? And all of a sudden, the guy out there in Barfield, wherever he owns five acres and wants to let his daughter build a house beside him, she can't build it because they can't have a fire hydrant, because there's a lot of this county doesn't have the flow for a fire hydrant. You know, and we're getting back to the same, no offense, but you're repeating yourself a little bit here, and you didn't answer her question. You know, that's what we came up this far, was another way to allow people to develop their property where they couldn't meet the regulations and have to have a fire hydrant. And if we just say no, no sprinklers, and there's a whole lot of property out there that just went off the market.
And I, and I guess I'm, I'm...
You know, so now we gotta back all up and say, are we not gonna require fire hydrants anymore? Because if we require fire hydrants, we either have to have an option or just say yes or no. You know, and so, well, that doesn't have anything to do with the cost of the sprinklers, who wants them, or anything like that. You know, we've got to either require fire hydrants, yes or no, or have an option and stuff. So I haven't heard that from the Home Builder Association. Would you rather say there's however many thousand acres out there that just became undevelopable, or would you rather have the option of using sprinklers where you can't have fire, you know, fire flow? Or is there another option? I don't know.
I think I have, I think I have offered another option, and that is smoke detectors. Because I'm gonna ask...
Now, smoke detectors are already in our codes.
Right. And so, but I'm asking, what are we, what's the issue that we're trying to resolve?
The codes say you have to have fire hydrant on a thousand feet of every lot. So this is just an option. If you don't have, if the, and there may be something else. This is just, just, just an option, you know? But if you don't have, there's a whole lot of property out there that doesn't have a fire hydrant, and CUD can't support the flow to put a fire hydrant. There are fire hydrants out there that have been marked and taken out of service because they don't have the flow where they once had. And that's a whole nother gray area, because at one point in time, your property was developable, and now it's not. So, I mean, I'm a property owner, and I think there's good flow in my area, but there's a whole lot of area where there's not, you know? And so, it just gets down to a simple question.
Yeah, I have to just think about it from a personal situation. When we decided to move out to the country, we realized there were certain things that we weren't gonna have the city-like services. Did we consider fire sprinklers? Yeah, we, we talked about that. It didn't show up on our priority list, and we could have invited the fire sprinkler salesman out to talk to us about it. We could have, was money an issue? We could have rolled it into the mortgage and paid for it over 30 years. We could do it now and get a home equity loan and pay for it for however many years. But the fact of the matter is, it's just not something that we feel like, that we need or want because the benefits aren't there. We just take our risks. We pay our homeowner's insurance premium. Our insurance company understands that there's not a fire hydrant on, on my street, that there is a risk of fire, but we just pay the premium accordingly. And I don't know that the premium is that much from, different than living in the city, to tell you the truth. But I think that that's just one of the things that we recognize for the privilege of living in a rural area, that you're not gonna have city services.
So you think we all take fire hydrants out of our codes, then?
I think fire hydrants are a nicety, are a very nice thing to have, but from a technical standpoint, it should not be the county's responsibility to have to, have to worry about those things. I mean, if you can't do it, if for technical reasons you can't do it, you can't do it. But why is it our responsibility to provide that service or to worry about, worry about that?
Same could be said for the quality of the roads and all different things, you know? It'd all be the homeowner's, you know, responsibility to, to have to do that. You have ambulance service and a whole lot of things. I, I don't know, I'm just asking questions here. I don't have an opinion one way or the other, but, you know, if somebody's house burns down and, and the fire hydrant had done the work, they're gonna look at CUD or look at the county or look at somebody and say, hey, you know, I'm supposed to have fire protection. I bought a house in a brand-new subdivision, and I didn't look for the fire hydrants, I just thought they were supposed to be there. But, I don't know, how long have we required fire hydrants in a subdivision?
I mean, the requirement's been in there as long as I've been here, and I know even before they had...
The 80s probably, or something like that?
Something 90s, maybe, 80s, 90s.
Yeah, I would like for him to talk about that again. Should ask him to...
Mr. Chairman, we have State Representative Mike Sparks here today, and since that has been brought up in the discussion about the, the state, or the legislature bringing up that ruling, I wondered if he would want to make some comment on what the legislature has said in that.
Looks like he does.
Well, to be honest with you, I didn't really plan on speaking.
Paterson, thank you for, for coming up here and making your presentation and also answering some questions. They were tough questions, and I guess that's part of our job.
Thank you, Commissioner Phillips, and thank you, Pettis. You know, I'm, I'm sitting back here, and I was reminded of what Harry Gill used to say, school superintendent, he'd say, "Oftentimes where you stand is from, is from where you sit." You know, so I have most respect for Larry Farley over there, and, you know, and when I was on the county commission, if you can recall, Jeff, I said, you know, Larry was the best man for the job in this county. You know, the very, very best man. I've never pulled a child out of a house that's been burned. I've never, you know, I remember a representative, after the tornadoes last year, he, he did pull a victim out from a house from the tornado damage, you know? I think Mr. Jensen makes some good points. That House Bill 2639, my understanding, it addresses the sprinkler systems, it addresses the county commission to opt into that. I'm not here to, I just really, just trying to gather some information from some things I've seen, just my time and the, and the short time in the three sessions, I guess, two and a half years in the General Assembly. You know, oftentimes you see a lot of lobbyists in Nashville, and I've said this at the county commission recently, you know, you don't see a lot of lobbyists for the small businesses, you know? And I've been encouraging Farm Bureau, that Pettis could attest to, in regards to the situation, I've seen in commercial sprinkler systems. And you may think, well, that's not really relevant to our discussion here, but I think it is. But I'll back up and mention it. Two years ago, I sat with State Fire Marshal Gary West. Larry, you know, you know Gary real well. He's a former fire chief, former volunteer, and where he stands is from where he's sat over all these years. Very passionate about fire safety. Tennessee, I think, ranks number two, if I'm not mistaken. We're one of the worst in the union for it. But I think if you get down and you look at the, at the specifics of that and why we're one of the worst, it's the inner city, it's the folks with, with an open flame, working an old wood stove or a little space heater, it's not having a, a smoke detector. You know, if they do, maybe the batteries are inoperable or something, but those, those fire deaths aren't, from what I see, new construction, you know? You know, I see, just mentioned this the other day at the commission, you know, we had a piece of legislation that I thought was gonna affect, affect us, and shared my concerns with it as a former planning commissioner. You know, it's, it's, you're seeing more and more mandates, whether it's placed on the county commission, whether it's from the state of Tennessee, or it's federal government placing mandates to the state that's passed on to y'all oftentimes. But, you know, I still, you know, we're ranked number two in job growth in this, just Rutherford County. That was kind of amazing, that number two in the nation. I still have people looking for jobs, you know? I still see the needs out there in, in the community. Home building does bring a lot of jobs to the table, brings a lot of revenue. Now, you could also argue those homes do adversely affect your infrastructure. You know, as a county commissioner, as a planning commissioner, often spoke out against Lake Forest and Laverne and got criticized for it, but often said, all this that we're passing, or they're passing, is gonna impact us one day, and it is impacting us one day. It's impacting us to this day on their police and, for the most part, police, you know, schools and so forth. You know, I got the criticism, but I, I think I'm glad that I said it, you know? But where I wanted to share two examples with you, that you may think it's not relevant to this discussion, but I think it is. And that's where I'm trying to get Farm Bureau involved, is that, you know, if you look at the fruit stand over there in Smyrna, okay? I think Will's familiar, maybe familiar with it, right there across from Nashville Motor Car. Here's an elderly gentleman just selling fruit on the side of the road for six years. The town of Smyrna wouldn't issue his temporary use permit. You know, he's just a retired guy, not making a lot of money selling fruit and vegetables, but that's something he wanted to do, okay? I admire, you know, somebody in their 70s wanting to get out there and, and work like that, and it's, it's, I guess, a hobby for him. It's fresh fruit and vegetables. Well, you know, the town mandates him to build a building. Okay, you think, well, okay, you've been there six years. Most people in retirement can't afford to go spend $200,000 on a commercial lot front Murphysboro Road, spend $150,000 on a building. Developer built the building. Then he was mandated to put a commercial sprinkler system in. Mandated to put a commercial sprinkler system in a fruit stand. I mean, it's really comical, you know? And I look at the legislature, and I'm like, okay, where's the lobbyist for this gentleman? Where's Farm Bureau? In fact, I criticized Farm Bureau pretty, pretty strongly, and there's nobody speaking up on, on those issues. That fruit, that sprinkler system in a fruit stand was $40,000. The developer was able to get it down to $33,000. I think he's, he has a fee he has to pay of $70 to, to monitor it or something. He made that happen? I mean, it, that's, that's cost. And you think the small business guy, like Commissioner Allen, some of these other small business people, how do you make it? You know, I know what it's like. I had three businesses at one time. I was working, working, working all the time, you know? Watch my tax assessment, go through the roof, that wasn't justified? That's a whole nother discussion right there. But I empathize with these folks. It's challenging in these times, and home building brings so much to the table. And I understand we need to have fire safety, but I think, get to the root of the problem, those fire deaths, for the most part, is in the urban areas. It's in the old, those old homes built in the 30s and the 40s and the 50s. It's, it's not the new construction, but just within that radius, and I know, all y'all are familiar with Murphysboro, the Omni Hut right there. One way I got to know Commissioner Gary West, State Fire Marshal, was because the Omni Hut Restaurant, they called me. Polly over, it was my first job at 13 years of age, and Major Walls was kind of a mentor for me. She says, "Mike, the State Fire Marshal is requiring us to knock out both ends of our building and put fire exits in." She said, "Now we gotta spray flame retardant on the wall." She said, now we got to spray flame retardant on the wall, okay? She said, I was also told to get, I had to get a permit to put a candle on the table at the restaurant. I mean, this restaurant, it's just, it's such a testament to the entrepreneurial spirit of Major Walls and his vision, you know. And what, fifty, built in nineteen sixty, you know. Been no fire deaths over there, created a lot of jobs for a lot of folks, a lot of tax revenue, brought into town of Smyrna from that. Went in there and Commissioner Farley met with us, Commissioner Gary Farley met with us. And the state of Tennessee, you know, Gary West was very fair. He looked at it, he found in the law where it was, she only needed one emergency, another emergency exit. They backed off the other one. She still had to do the flame retardant on the wall, the spray. And she had permit, candle holders that will hold the candles. If you've been in Omni Hut recently, you'll see the candle holders there. Well, that had a cost, okay, to her. She struggled, I know they struggle, okay? And I don't think she'd mind me sharing this. I know they struggle. Then right next door, you have Joe Walls with the North American Evergreens Nursery. He lost about, I think, a lot of his produce back in the May floods, a couple of years back. You know, Joe's just an entrepreneur. He's just trying to, just trying to put bread on the table. Well, he couldn't get his temporary permit issued again. He had to build a building. Hundred twenty thousand dollars, I think it is, on that building. I was in there the other day buying a couple of trees and I said, why aren't you using your building over there? He said, well, I got to put a sprinkler system in it. I'm like, excuse me? He said, yeah, I've got to put a sprinkler system. I said, you mean, you can't sell a plant or a flower or a jar of honey or anything? And he said, no. You know, and I know Pettis, you know, with Foreign Bureau, you can, you know how the legislature is. There's nobody up there lobbying for really the small business person. We can argue that, say, well, Foreign Bureau does or the Chamber of Commerce does. They really don't, you know. They don't really have the time. They look at these big issues that's big and they tackle it, okay? That issue to the Omni Hut or Joe Walls or the other, I forgot the other folks' names. Maybe somebody can help me if they know the last name starts with C. What's it, yeah, the one across-
Chocly's over there.
Chocly's, okay. And if that's going to happen right here in our community, it's going to happen in Tullahoma, Buckstort, Shelby County. And, you know, we look at jobs. I'm telling you, folks, the lobbying effort, it's big business, it's big corporations, you know. I didn't vote with a bill of the day that took off the caps on your donations, went against my party on that, you know. It's all big business driven and there's nobody really speaking up on these small business issues. I have the utmost respect for Larry Farley, you know. And I got endorsed by the firefighters this year, last year. And I was like, why did y'all endorse me? You know, because they know how I feel about this. And, but I respect Larry and I respect this body and the commissioners that are serving here. And I know you're about public safety. But like I've told Gary West, I said, Gary, why don't we, maybe there's a grant out there for smoke detectors in these urban areas. Why don't we address the root of the problem? Not go impede growth and development. Because three thousand dollars may not sound like a lot on a three hundred thousand dollar home, it's not. But in a starter home, that's a lot of money. And you're seeing homeowner, you're seeing folks out there can't even afford to buy a home. They're paying twelve hundred dollars in rent now. I don't know if anybody's seen what the average rental home is costing. But it just seems like things are getting, my dad always used a term called cattywampus, where things got out of proportion and just crooked, I guess, is what he used it for. And it just seems like you're getting into some times that are cattywampus. And, you know, as a, I see whether it's my other friends that want to attack the federal government or attack something going on in San Francisco or attack something going on in New York, like Mayor Bloomberg with the Big Gulps. Nobody attacks the problems locally. And that's where, that's all I want to say. I'm here just to kind of gather some information on a bill that I'm going to try to run that hopefully can address the commercial sprinkler systems and the small businesses like that. And I'll also say this, you know, Waffle House came in, no sprinkler systems in Waffle House, yet there's an open flame, you know. Small business people, they just don't really have a voice sometimes. And I have the utmost respect for Commissioner Allen and Commissioner Phillips and Commissioner Jordan and y'all that are here today. But I think on the county commission, you've got strong lobbying effort on the county commission with Commissioner Farley, Commissioner P., Commissioner Jack Black, that are all firemen. And I think that the House Bill twenty-six thirty-nine that was passed last year is effective. But I just really didn't want to speak. But I just wanted to, while we got into it and you called on me, I just wanted to share what I see locally. And it's not, like I say, it's not San Francisco, it's not New York, it's my hometown. And those little business owners right there, you know, they may give the next thirteen-year-old their first job, you know. But I think we need to see that stuff. But I appreciate y'all listening to me and I don't mind if anybody's got a question or anything from me.
Mike, let me just kind of throw something really strange out there at you. And the businesses, and I'm talking about the larger businesses.
Yes, sir.
Quote Kroger-
Yes, sir.
-in the paper a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
That's where I came from, okay?
Okay.
Appreciate that all that much, but-
Oh, that's right, I forgot.
The big businesses that-
Yes, sir.
That adhere to all these rules, okay? They have to put all of these things in. Those big businesses that you've talking about, having effective lobbyists and all this kind of thing. They adhere by those rules. They pay all of this fee permits. They do everything according to those rules and don't complain and don't ask questions. They just do it because it's part of doing business. Do you think it's fair to those businesses that someone, quote, just because they're a small business, don't have to? To me, that's what you're saying. And to me, it's not logical.
Yes, sir. You're not specific to the wine and grocery store issue, are you? Is that, good. Well, we can, and I'll say this, and if it is specific to the wine and grocery store, it's fine. On that issue, there's a good case in point. Kroger has the economies of scale with all these employees, managers. I don't know how many Krogers we have here in Rutherford County, maybe five. And you multiply that amount of managers and employees. Well, all those employees and managers, you know where they're at on that issue? They're up there lobbying on Capitol Hill. They're up there lobbying, they're locking on doors. The small business, well, this is what I'm saying. The small business owner, you know what he's doing? He's working, Jeff, he's working. The big businesses, they have the big attorneys that can go out here, Jeff, and they can go to that planning committee. They can go to that city councilman and they can say, no, this is what we're doing, you know. Case in point is that Waffle House, you know, I guarantee you, Waffle House has a lot bigger amount of influence and they can afford it than that little fruit stand, Chocly folks over there or Joe Walls over there. They have the lobbying, they can afford it. The small business owner can't, Jeff. And I know, got the utmost respect for you, I know your heart's always in the right place. But I'm just telling you, Jeff, what I've seen the past three years. You know, Kroger can have two hundred fifty Krogers selling wine if that's the issue. Liquor store owner can only own one liquor store in the state, only one. The big business have the economies of scale, Commissioner.
Want to get into liquor store.
Well, I think that was the comment about Kroger that I made, though.
Yeah, but the point, the point that I'm trying to make is you've got these businesses out there. And these businesses are big businesses and they adhere by all these rules and regulations. And is it fair to those businesses, okay? Is it fair to those that a small business don't have to do any of that? And to me, that's what you're saying.
No, it's direct opposite. The example I'm proving that's just twelve miles down the road is, big business was exempted, small business had to pay for it.
Mr. Sparks, I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a certain square footage that's required? I know when I built my facility back a little while ago, they told me if my facility was in a certain square footage-
Yes, ma'am.
If it went over that, then I would have to sprinkle that particular building. But if it stayed within that-
You mean on commercial?
Yes.
Good question. I don't think there is because Joe Walls over there, his building is about the smallest commercial building that you could probably possibly build. I can't speak, as far as I know, it's just, it could be a four hundred square foot office. I mean, you know, retail, that you have some kind of retail space that potentially could be used for an office or something down the road. But-
Mike, was that specific to Smyrna's municipal code?
It is and, you know, when I've got with Foreign Bureau, to be honest, Commissioner Allen, I don't know how we address it. And that's why I have to look for people that's a lot smarter than I am, like Mr. Reed here, okay? That hopefully we can address these things next year. But they have a cost. As you know, you're an entrepreneur, that's one reason I have a lot of respect for you because you know how it is. I mean, you know, folks that's buying homes also, you know, have to put a roof on. They have to put central heating area and they have to have somebody do the floor tile, the concrete. You know, all those are jobs and a positive economic impact to, you know, to our community.
Do you have any general thoughts about the question that Will asked in terms of, you know, doing-
Yeah. You know, when I told, I told one of our leaders, who I'll keep nameless, that I was going to come, maybe come here and, you know, I didn't know if I'd be asked to say a few words and this guy advised me not to. No, don't get involved in local issues. You know, I've never spoken to county planning committee. I've never even came to county commission, okay? Because I don't get involved in those issues. Y'all, and as, my logic is, you're closest to the people. You understand the issues more than any state representative or congressman does. And I think everyone in this room would agree with that. But when I see things that I say get a little cattywampus, okay, lack of a better term, you know, I feel a little bit led to get more involved. And, but this piece of legislation, I'm really going to try to really get my ducks in a row and see what we can do to make sure this doesn't impede another small business person, like I've seen it happen, you know.
You do realize, Mike, that all this proposal is, is to put sprinklers in houses where they can't get fire hydrants.
Well, you know, when I was sitting back here-
And the vast majority of your new developments would have fire hydrants.
Yeah, when I was sitting back here, Commissioner Jordan, I had, I was just thinking about my in-laws that live out in the country, lived there for, I think my wife's grandmother's ninety years old. Been there all, out in the county, you know, ninety years, never had a fire death. You know, they don't have a, you know, a system there or sprinkler system or a fire hydrant. And they've been fine all these years, you know. That's not a decision for me, that's a decision for this body. I guess where my angle is, is just wanting to share with y'all what I have seen, you know. I would, I'd rather see the state legislature or here locally, maybe it's Consolidated Water gets involved. Maybe it's Mill Tennessee Electric that says, hey, here's a few grants for, you know, smoke alarms. You know, if a home is, you know, more likely to have a, be using space heaters, let's find a way to help them, you know, rather than mandate new construction. Now, we'll say, if you have multifamily that has the high density that Commissioner Allen had mentioned earlier, I can see where a flame, you know, fires could jump over to the next unit. And you see a lot of the high density where you have the sewer there, a lot of vinyl siding being used. So I do see where you have, whether it's a nursing home, there are, there is definitely an area of need where you need sprinkler systems. There's no doubt, you know.
About Lake Farm. If Lake Farm had been built without fire hydrants-
Yes, ma'am.
Holy cow.
Yeah. It's, you know, but that's not my decision, that's a decision for y'all to make. You know, I think it reminds me, he quoted proverbs earlier, Mr. Jensen did. And I often quote proverbs where it says, you know, there's wisdom in the multitude of counselors. And I think that's what we come here today for, is, you know, you bring the multitude of counselors and y'all's expertise to the table. You know, I've seen a lot of folks, they're motivated by their profit, whether it's who's writing their paycheck or whether it's, you know, Mr. Jensen trying to put a loaf of bread on the table or Joe Walls. And this was sad, you know, Joe was so busy working, he doesn't have time. He doesn't know who to contact or anything. You know, he didn't have time to go lobby, you know, like Kroger can, you know, or Costco can, or Publix can. But, you know, at the end of the day, we're all in this stuff together. And it just seems, it's kind of sad where you see these excesses, things that are just blatantly crazy, for lack of a better term, and there's no voices on those issues, you know. But I don't know if, hopefully I've addressed y'all's questions. But, you know, I can't think of anything that I could ever criticize this body for. And really, I was reluctant to even comment because I can catch myself getting a little passionate about, you know, the voices that I hear out there from folks, you know.
Mike, thank you. And when you served on the county commission, you never backed up from a controversial issue.
Well-
You said your piece and you caught criticism there. And sometimes you catch criticism for some of the stances that you make. And you're going to hack somebody off and make somebody happy no matter what the legislature makes every time.
It is.
What we're talking about, and maybe I shouldn't put words in anyone else's mouth, but what I'm talking about as a planning commissioner and a county commissioner both is one hundred percent a public safety issue. A public safety issue.
Yeah.
And that's what we keep driving at and have been for a number of years. There's a whole lot of people who are passionate about that. And this planning commission is trying to grow up as our county continues to grow and prosper too.
Yeah.
Some things that have worked in years and years past don't work for us now or won't work for the future, our kids and everything else. And we're just trying our best to look not only what's best for the county. We're looking at our history, we're looking at our future, we're trying to look at everything that's going on. And public safety is becoming more and more and more and more of an issue for us. And this is a public safety issue to a lot of us. And I'm not saying all of us, but a lot of us. And that's the reason that the thing in my mind is there to start with. So, number one, thank you for all the work that you do for this county and the people that you represent. Not only those, but for all the people in the county too. Thank you for your service.
Well, thank you. If I can close by just mentioning, you know, Gary West, that State Fire Marshal, he's extremely passionate about that issue. But Gary's never ran a fruit stand. He's never ran a small business. He's never built a home, from my understanding, okay? I would say that what the state and the locals ought to do is go to those, and maybe the volunteer fire department, maybe the city fire department, and see those older homes and encourage those folks to put in the smoke alarms, to make sure they check their batteries, which y'all do a good job of as it is. But I appreciate the good job that y'all are doing here. And I know you've got a lot of things to tackle. And Jeff, I have tried to back off and not, and say as little as possible. I've learned that sometimes saying less, you can get more things done.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like for Josh, if he would, to kind of address that House bill. Do you have some information on it, Josh, that you could kind of explain to us what that bill, what the intent was and what it does? And is it law and blah, blah, blah?
Yeah, I can try. The reference was to House Bill twenty-six thirty-nine earlier. And portions of it were quoted, but not all of it. I'll point out, first of all, it's a, it is a bill that was adopted, as correctly said, April of last year. It amends TCA sixty-eight one twenty-one oh one, which is not in the planning statutes. That section deals with an authorization for the State Fire Marshal to basically create rules. And when you look at the underlying statute, there's a litany of things there that the State Fire Marshal can include within the State Fire Marshal's rules. One of those original statements before this amendment said that it shall not include mandatory sprinkler systems. So in other words, as I understand it, the State Fire Marshal could not create a rule that just had a mandatory sprinkler systems across the board. The amendment that's being referenced here as Bill twenty-six thirty-nine still has that language. But then it says, this is not, and I'm kind of paraphrasing here, but it says, this doesn't prevent local governments from adopting more stringent requirements. In other words, it's authorized saying, hey, local governments, if you want to create a sprinkler system requirement, you can. Even though the State Fire Marshal may not do that unilaterally, you could. If you do, and then this is subsection little one under there, it says, if a local government seeks to adopt mandatory sprinkler requirements for one family and two-family dwellings, then the local government may only adopt such requirements by either ordinance or resolution as appropriate upon an affirmative two-thirds vote on final reading, dot, dot, dot. All right, so that was a portion referenced earlier, is would it require a two-thirds vote among the, and it says legislative body, which would not be this body. That would be the county commission, a two-thirds vote of the county commission. It also does say, as mentioned earlier, mandatory sprinkler requirements shall be voted on in an ordinance or resolution separate from any other ordinance or resolution addressing building construction safety standards, which would mean, in my view, something separate from the subdivision regulations. Now-
Josh, I got a question.
Yep.
Does that mean a broad- Do, uh, does that mean a broad, hundred percent blanket requirement for sprinklers? Or does that mean if we've got a twenty lot subdivision that has inadequate flow for fire hydrants, we could still require them there? And I think that's really what we're addressing here.
Yeah, that is. I think that's the rub, and, and to be honest with you, I don't, not sure I know the answer, because the statute says mandatory sprinkler requirements. At first glance, to me, that means you're creating a rule that says every new constru-, every house that's being constructed is gonna require, is gonna have to have a sprinkler system, which is not what this proposed subdivision, uh, regulations says. It says you've gotta have, be within a thousand feet of fire hydrant. If you're not, you can't build unless you get a waiver, and one of the requirements of a waiver is a sprinkler. That's different in my mind than a, than a mandatory sprinkler system requirement. Having said that, all I've, all I have got in front of me is the bill itself. I don't know, I can't speak to the legislative history, there may be some comments and so forth associated with it, may give us some insight on that. I, I guess you don't have to, you're not voting on this today anyway, and so I'm happy to look, look into that issue and address it in more detail. Um, but that's, that's what I've got in front of me at the moment.
Thank you. Anyone have questions for Josh?
I think CUD wanted to make some comments, had their hand up.
Sure. Let's, let's hear from someone that hasn't.
I'm Bill Danelle, General Manager, Consolidated Utility District. Uh, I just wanted to explain one thing, and it's kind of a complicated, but we talk about operating the water system, and, and in reality, it's operating a puzzle, is what it amounts to. From an engineering standpoint, that's called hydraulics. Commissioner Jordan brought up earlier, he didn't quite understand how we had flows in some areas at some point, and today we don't have those. And I fully understand how that's confusing, but you gotta remember, as development goes throughout the county, you increase demands, and you, and you have to meet existing requirements or current requirements. You might have an area today, all of our water, the bulk of our water comes out of a tank, you know, you have a pump, pumps the tank, the water comes out of a tank and feeds a service over here, and that feeds that home, and also serves that fire hydrant. The pressure that's provided or available, and the flows are available, are a function of elevation, pipe size, and all those other factors of hydraulics, C-factors of the pipe, and a whole bunch of different things. The bottom line is, suddenly we add another development down the road here, that is, let's say, twenty or thirty foot higher in elevation. And I can't provide a fire hydrant over here, but I can provide water over here to that area. Well, now, under state, by state law, and also by federal regulation, we have to maintain minimum pressures at those services of twenty PSI. So in order to maintain that twenty PSI at this new development that we put down the road here, that's at some higher elevation, I may have to go back and throttle the fire hydrant and carry, remove, reduce the flows in that fire hydrant, because I have to maintain that twenty PSI at all times. My point is, there's a whole lot of factors that go in, that are involved in providing fire hydrants, providing fire service, and there's reasons why today, you've seen areas that had fire hydrants in the past, or had serviceable fire hydrants in the past, that are not considered serviceable today at all, it's essentially a function of growth. Some of those were probably, shouldn't have been put in there, uh, some of them were probably put in there properly in the past, and now, today, based on growth, don't have the flows available. We have a lot of tools in our disposal today, a hydraulic modeling program where we can be very accurate about, if I do this here, what is my effect throughout the rest of that pressure zone? We operate thirteen pressure zones throughout the system. So we have the ability to, to define that, am I gonna have an impact today? But it's very possible that you approve a, a subdivision somewhere that could negatively affect and impact a fire hydrant somewhere else. That's not something that typically we have, uh, gone back and taken a look at. Obviously, we've gone back in particularly the phosphor zone, I think, and throttled back a bunch of hydrants there, but maybe that's something that CUD needs to look in the future, when we say, hey, you know, we can provide, uh, water flow here, is it gonna have a negative impact, impact on fire protection some, somewhere else throughout that pressure zone?
Are your newer modeling, these newer modeling, will they take into effect, you know, what this subdivision's gonna have on this fire hydrant three miles away?
Well, when we, whenever-
And you do, are you to the point where you can do that?
We could, yeah, we could look at that right now and say, okay, when we add this, probably as much as, um, you know, we can look at those elevations, see what elevations we can serve without an impact of fire hydrant, but that's something we could, could do today, that we couldn't do in the past.
Bill, can, Bill, can, I'm over here behind this screen.
I understand, and I hear with one ear, so when I hear, I hear every direction.
But, uh, I, I know, as, as far as my home is concerned, I sit somewhat on a hill, and I'm out here at Rock Vale, that's one of the last water lines that was put out that direction there, and when I first moved there in nineteen ninety-eight, I had all kinds of water pressure, and I was about the only one that was sitting out there. Now there's a subdivision across the road, about thirteen or fifteen house, houses, and it seems like every one of them had put in a swimming pool and a little bit of everything else. Six-thirty in the morning, when everybody's getting ready to go to work, uh, my shower, which used to be one of these rain showers, was really nice, now I have to run around in it.
To see if you find the water?
And then, uh, when, in the summertime comes around, and all of those irrigation systems in those new homes out there, my irrigation system comes from above, I wait on the good Lord to bring it, but, uh, and they start running all that for those swimming pools, that flow which is, I have in the kitchen now, is just, I realize there's been that change. Uh, whenever we get into this situation, or we're making these changes out here, such as a sprinkler system like, like that, or whatever, will it affect that pressure in those systems?
In the sprinkler system, yeah, and I, and I will say this, and I'm, and I'm gonna, this is a personal observation as an engineer, and I don't have any calculations, or, or not enough in-depth study to, to make a determination, but it concerns me sometime when I see these sprinkler systems put in, that i- is there enough follow-up, uh, to determine whether or not the flows are available? I think, uh, I look at some of the piping that goes into these houses for sprinkler systems, I know what the inside diameter is based on the material they're using, and the lengths around, and, and I'm not calculating, because I, I go to the meter and I, I stop there, but sometimes I worry about what's being put on beyond those systems, because, yeah, everything looks good on, in, on paper, but is there enough inspection beyond the meter to determine whether or not it can truly, uh, serve a, a sprinkler at the farthest most bedroom upstairs? You know, I, I don't know the answer to that. I hope the sprinkler system people are installing it, but sometimes I look at the way some of these things are plumbed, and it really makes me wonder.
Well, I just wondered about that, because I have what's called a post-beam home, which is all wood, the ceiling's wood, the walls wood, and, and I think the fire department, about the only thing they could do for me is save the lot, uh, when they got out there, because of what type of structure that I have there. But I had just wondered about that, because as you said there, construction changes.
Demands changes throughout the system. I tell you right now, you could take an area, uh, that's got a reasonable fire protection, and put a load at the end of that, uh, somewhere in between, close enough to the tank, say that you can provide it, such as an Embassy Suites Hotel, and completely affect the hydraulics at the very end of the system, because the demand is so high for that one unit. So, I mean, those are all the things that we take into account, uh, whenever we're looking at an installation, sizing pipe and all those things, but we talk about the desire to provide fire hydrants throughout all of Rutherford County. Uh, I've also talked about the expense associated with it, the fact that we don't have the water available to keep the lines fresh. I mean, there's a whole issue of hydraulics that goes into making these decisions. You know, there's the, the vast majority of, of rural areas in this country do not have fire hydrants or fire protection. I'm not saying they shouldn't have, but they don't have because of hydraulic concerns. I know out west that, uh, a lot of those areas, um, there's no hope of ever having enough water lines built big enough out there. They, they'll put a tank out in the front yard, bury a three thousand gallon tank in the front of every yard, and so when the fire department shows up, they've automatically got three thousand gallons of water on site, and they take the roof drains, and they run that to that tank, and then let it overflow from there. That would be a great idea in Rutherford County if we weren't sitting on rock, you know? That'd be a very expensive option as well, but, uh, my point is, I understand the issue, I, you know, that's a political issue, we're not pro or con, uh, sprinkler systems, but growth, uh, throughout the county, uh, certainly has effect, uh, on our, on CUD's ability to provide fire protection, and, and the existing, uh, fire protection infrastructure that's in place today.
Bill, I want to follow up just a second to Pettis' question about the, the flows impacting the pressure on the sprinkler systems, and you just said you got a concern about that as well, but you stopped at the meter. You know, the whole reason we came up with this solution was so that, like, you know, Will made the point, some, you know, property that would have been denied development could potentially be developed. Have, have we created a false sense of security here?
You, you're asking, you're asking a personal opinion, not a, an engineering-
We've asked everybody else that's come up there.
But I'm, I'm looking, you know, when I look at some of these installations, I, I question these installations, because I know how big a pipes are running, you know, they- Is Larry in here? How much, how much water do you want in a sprinkler head? Thirty gallon a minute, is that right?
A sprinkler head's eighteen gallon a minute.
Eighteen gallon a minute, okay, okay. Nobody really knows for sure whether I can get eighteen, I mean, somebody's done that calculation, is, is everybody signing off on these residential sprinkler systems? Are they signing off on them?
If you, if you don't have the water flow, you can always put a tank in there that will supplement that, that, that flow.
Uh, there, there's ways to do it. Can we provide sprinkler systems? Yes, they, they can be provided, and CUD has the water to provide those sprinkler systems. I'm just not certain that, uh, from a personal standpoint, professional standpoint, whether enough inspection is done after it leaves our meter to guarantee that they have the flows in the homes that they think they have. And that's just based on observations of some of the initial, uh, installations that I've seen. It can be done, yes, it can be done, but let me, let me go back to the original premise. We go in an area, we can't provide fire hydrants, but we allow development in that area, okay? It's at a higher elevation. That development itself may say, hey, we need to throttle this hydrant back over here in order to maintain pressures up here, and, and the other side of that coin is, if you could have a fire hydrant operation down here, typically, your pressure at that home is sixty PSI for that fire sprinkler system. The minute you open that fire hydrant down here, and you're flowing water out of that fire hydrant, the pressure at those homes, which are protected by fire sprinklers, may now be insufficient. Now, that, we can't do anything a hundred percent of the time, but the bottom line is, if you open a fire hydrant down here, that could very easily impact your ability to fight fires in those houses with sprinkler systems. We have a major line break, they have no fire protection.
It could be the fire hydrant that the, that the fire department is going to, to go and save that house in addition to the-
It could, could very easily take the pressure off that sprinkler, yes. But, in all fairness, typically, the sprinkler would have it out before the fire department ever got to the hydrant, theoretically, theoretically.
But I'm just, we're just talking in theories here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter's trying to save himself.
First of all, I'm, I'm not against home builders. I, I love cities home building coming up, uh, uh, it, it's prospered for our county, it means the economy's coming back, but as we build and we grow, we can't overlook, uh, public safety or fire safety. Uh, the instance brought up about moving out in the county, where, and taking that risk, well, I understand that, but do you just say, we just, just don't do away with the fire departments and then just do away with everything? When you build subdivisions, and you don't put the fire hydrants in the subdivision to provide us a resource to fight the fire, then I think they have to be sprinkled, because, uh, Commissioner Phillips, you recall up in, in Pigeon Forge, when all those cabins caught on fire, one just caught another one on fire, and it all started on songs, there was a hundred something cabins burnt, because if you, if you don't have any, you take away the sprinklers and the fire hydrants in a subdivision, you're taking away all fire protection, all fire protection. There's, in other words, if the fire department gets there, they have to shut the water, and that's a whole operation itself. If you have sprinklers, then it puts the, that room out, and they said it doesn't save much money. Is it cheaper to rebuild a room and replace the floor from water damage, or without a sprinkler system, the fire goes through the roof and consumes the whole room, which is cheaper? To rebuild that room, sheet rock and floor, or rebuild the whole structure? Uh, we have, uh, I'm in the process, just about every day, of writing letters to insurance companies. They call me every day, because the, I, I think the disasters of Hurricane Sandy, and a lot of the disasters going, the insurance companies have taken a big hit, so they've gotta recoup that money. Uh, they're into business and making money, just like these gentlemen are. Uh, so the insurance premiums are going up, and if you're not within, we have, Rutherford County has a class-five ISO rating, Mercer has a class-two, the lower you get, the better it is. We have a split rating of five-nine. If you're within a thousand foot of a hydrant, and, uh, five miles of a fire station, you have a class-five. If you're more than five miles, if you're more, if you, five miles of a station and no fire hydrant, you're a class-nine. Now, between a five and a nine, you're talking about five or six hundred dollars a year in premiums. Had a gentleman out on Florence Road, who, there, all that's incorporated in the city, except for two roads, uh, they live in the county, but because Salem Blackman Station was moved off ninety-six over to, oh, Salem, it moved them further away from Florence Road. Those people out there on Jobin Trail are five-point-three miles from our station, they're five-point-three or, or pi-, five-point-four miles from Amville Station, so they're in no man's land. This gentleman's insurance, you seen on Channel Five News, his insurance went up a thousand dollars a year. So, it's, the, the, uh, insurance premiums are tied to the fire protection, and, you know, I'm in the job, my, my, my job, my passion is life safety and property preservation. And so, when you, when you make this regulation, I understand we can't put sprinklers in everybody's home, and that's a, a chance people take, but we can't build subdivisions, we cannot build subdivisions and not provide some kind of fire protection, whether it be fire hydrants or sprinkler systems in those homes, and it just, you're putting other people at risk. If somebody is careless, for whatever reason, or just by accident, and a house catches on fire, and there's not sprinklers or, or hydrant, then it's gonna burn more than one home. It's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a tragic event when that happens. So I'm just asking, just in the subdivisions, please consider if they, if it can't support a hydrant, we need sprinklers in these homes.
Chief Harley?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned the, the classifications that we have here in this county. And a lot of that classification also based upon the ability of our firefighters that we have here in the county, and the way that, that, through some of the leadership that, that you have done, and the training that our firefighter's done out here in the county now, we have lowered that classification, and it's based upon the equipment that we have, uh, more fire departments that we have as well.
Well, it's based on, uh, forty percent of that is based on your water supply, and of course, if CUD grows and puts more hydrants in, that's enabled a lot of our fire departments to lower their ISO ratings. Forty percent of it's water supply, ten percent of it's communications, your dispatch, uh, thirty percent is your equipment, your training, what type of equipment you have, and the resources that you provide. Of course, if we, if we had paid firefighters, that would also lower, help lower it, because you have a faster response. But forty percent of that's water, which is almost half, but there's a lot of factors go into it, like equipment, what kind of apparatus you have, uh, the training that each firefighter has, how much training you put in each year, um, just different variations like that.
Thank you. Doug, can we kind of begin to move on a little bit? Will you, would you summarize where we are right now, and what we're proposing?
Doug, can I ask you?
Can I, you care if I ask?
No, I don't care at all.
All right. I, I have two, I have two questions, and I want to know how they pertain to the regulations. I'm unwilling to approve a five lot, or a twenty-five, or a two-hundred-and-fifty lot subdivision without adequate fire protection, either in the form of hydrants or the form of sprinklers. We've allowed the sprinklers, the discussion has been in the past, I believe, as an alternative to inadequate, uh, hydrant pressure-
Yes, sir.
-or hydrant supply. I'm also unwilling to, if there's a guy, and I'll use this on the Bradable Ridge over there, it's got sixty acres on the backside of it, and he wants to give his daughter two, two acres, and his son two acres, and they're gonna put a house, which is allowed, down, three houses down one driveway, are we, does this regulation require them to sprinkle those homes? In, in my opinion, you have two different types of consumers. The person that's gonna move into that twenty-five lot subdivision expects a certain amount of service. That guy's son and daughter have grown up with, you know, a fair expectation, knowing where they live and, and what their risks are. Is there any allowance for that in this?
The, the way it's currently written as, on your screen-
Right.
No, the way it's currently written, it's in all subdivisions. Now, keep in mind-
Now, of course, they could go to five acres, and then that, that takes them-
Exactly, that was, yes, that was the point I was gonna make.
And I'm aware of that.
Right. This, this just counts for subdivisions, the state definition of subdivision being anything under five acres.
Right.
Okay, under, understand that. Uh, the way this is currently written, to answer your question, it does not allow that leeway at this time.
I mean, it's not a killer for me, but the, the twenty-five lot subdivision, I'm unwilling to, to approve anything that doesn't have some type of adequate fire-
Now, as an alternative, and I'll just throw this out there for consideration, if nothing else, I mean, you could keep the language the same as it is today, as in major subdivisions, understanding the way we classify subdivisions is gonna be a little different than what we do now. Now, it's based on the number of lots. Under our proposed regulations, it's based on what exactly they're doing. You know, you could have a two lot major under our proposed regulations, if they are, you know, extending right-of-way, uh, new roads, those kind of things, it's gonna be based on what they're doing, as opposed, the, the situation you're referring to, uh, you know, somebody owns a hundred acres, they want to give their daughter two acres, uh, that may not qualify as a major in that situation. Now, a point that I think does need to be brought out, I understand, you know, people, uh, you know, buy out an area, and they, you know, they assume a certain amount of risk, I under, I understand that. I think, kind of, when I, when I think long-term on things, you know, eventually, those folks that own that house that took those risks initially are gonna sell their house to somebody else.
That, that's very true.
And those people may not understand the risks they're assuming.
Understand the risks.
You know, I mean, that's, I think that plays into the discussion as well. I'm not trying to say one way or the other, but I'm just think that that plays into the discussion as well. but I'm just think that that plays into the discussion as well, that, you know, 15 years down the road.
You know, we all know it here. We see a good amount of family member, people that come up here, they want fire hydrant waiver or whatever, and it, it has to do with the family member thing. Or some sub, small subdivisions, you know, single lot subdivision, that kind of stuff. And I was just curious. That's the way I understood them, the way you told me. I wanted to clarify that.
Right. And then like, and I know everybody understands this, but just to reiterate for those that are here that may be watching this on, on television, what we have before us is a draft, okay? You know, we, today is a work session. We weren't planning on making any decision on this anyway today. That's why I'm glad we're having this discussion that we're having, because I think ultimately it'll make the document better. We cannot actually adopt this, a document as a whole, until there is a public hearing before the planning commission at a public hearing that was advertised for at least 30 days. So even if we decided, yeah, we worked everything out, we're going to go ahead and set this for public hearing, it'd be June before we'd even have a chance to, to look at this based on our meeting schedule. So just, just so everybody understands that. I mean, I know the commission does, but just those who may be watching and those in the audience that may not understand how the process moves forward, just to kind of let them know how things work.
There's just one thing I want to add, Doug, to what you just said about when that house sells. Because I agree with Jim, there's a, I see this as sort of a two-tiered, and with Mike, there's a two-tiered set of responsibility here. One, for those singular homes that are out there on large lots or, you know, custom homes that are being built at one time versus a concentrated neighborhood. I, I do feel like there's just a different level of responsibility that we have even to this. But those singular homes, once they sell, really any home, but once it sells, part of every new homeowner's due diligence is they call and find out what their home insurance is going to cost. That is the number one thing, every, that you want to know your taxes and you want to know your insurance because they factor that into their payments. So they're going to find out what their home insurance is going to cost, and they're going, and their agent's going to ask them those questions. And I'm sure there's probably a computer system that they plug in the address and they tell them what their rate's going to be. So it's not like they're not going to know when they buy it, that they're choosing to live in an unprotected area.
No, I mean, that's, I was just throwing it out for discussion.
But I feel like that's, I feel like that's more well-known than some of the more subtle things that we do on recorded plats, you know, so then like that thing about the lot six that we did earlier today. I think that lot six person might not have any idea that they own, you know, technically own that strip and are paying taxes on that strip and down the road, but they're going to know how much their insurance is.
CUD brought up an excellent point about the water flows to the sprinkler system. I guess it comes into my mind now, if you bought a sprinkler system for your home and then in the event that you have a need for that sprinkler system and it doesn't function, then who bears the liability, responsibility for that? Now, do they have an opportunity to go back to CUD? Say, you did not supply me sufficient water flow for my sprinkler to operate? Food for thought.
The person that installs that system would verify that it had enough water flow to supply that. If not, they would require a tank to be added with that, a 300 gallon tank to be added with that system to supplement to make sure it has that fire flow.
But you would also have to have a pump then to get the water out of that tank to get proper pressure. So now instead of 3,000, we're talking about 6,000 maybe, or, and hope the pump works?
Hope your power's cut off.
Dollars, dollars. We're, since, since we're installing a tank and a pump.
Larry, 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 can you get up on the post?
He quoted $1.65 square foot for a 2,500 square foot home, that's $4,125. And you, you compare that to your homeowner's insurance, and I promise you, a couple of ISO ratings is going to jump 100, $200. So I think those costs will be recouped a whole lot quicker than 40 years.
My question is the cost of the tank and the pump, and will that pump operate 25 or 30 years from now? And how much is it going to cost with the, to have that installed on the home and hope that it works when the time comes and hope that you have power for that pump to work?
Yeah, once the house is vacant, the power's turned off. Does that turn the pump off?
Fires in the fuse box.
Fires in the fuse box, yeah. And I have known this in the past. What about, is, is that sprinkled water metered? What if your house is vacant and your water's turned off? Does it come through that same meter? Then you don't have a sprinkler. And there are people living in houses, due to financial reasons, have had their water cut off for a day or two before they get to turn it back on because your guys roll out there all the time turning meters off and on. I see them through the neighborhoods and all, and, and when that meter's off, there's no sprinkling going on right then.
But I mean, you know, you got, you're going to have all kinds of situations, but I think we, you know, and like they said, 90% of the people, even Mr. Phillips said he didn't think about it when he built his cabin. 90% of the people never plan for disaster. They always plan for the, the best, the best laid plans. You know, if everything goes perfect, we never prepare for disaster. And that's why we have insurance. But, you know, I'd just like to see us to take a step further to provide a little, a little, a little bit level, a higher level of protection.
Doug, once again, can you summarize where we are right now and, and where we are right now and what we're proposing, how it's different?
Okay, you're talking with the, with the sprinkler regulation, you're just, what we're proposing, okay. Okay, I'll start off with the current regulation that we have, and you can see it on the screen. Now, this is what's proposed. But what you're seeing on the screen is identical to what is currently in effect with the exception of the highlighted section I've got right here. And the one word I've highlighted, all subdivisions, currently instead of all, it says major in our current regulations. Now, and of course, today, major subdivision is any subdivision with four or more lots. Three, two, one, those are considered minor subdivisions. They don't fall into that category. So what we're proposing at this point is just to change major to all, which would include single lot subdivisions, it would include two lot partitions, it would include anything considered a minor plat. Being, that doesn't matter how many lots it is under our proposed regulations or a major plat. And it just, they would all, this would encompass all of them. Again, this is not a requirement for sprinkler systems in all single-family homes. All this is, is a requirement for such a system if the fire hydrants in that area cannot support a, if they're, the water lines rather, cannot support a fire hydrant, the lots themselves are not within 1,000 feet of that hydrant and they request a waiver to that provision. One of the requirements of the waiver is that, in absence of that, you have to have the sprinkler system. It's not an either or. It's not a situation where if somebody can put the fire hydrants in, then they say, well, I'm just going to go ahead and put sprinklers in so I don't have to do the fire hydrants. If the fire hydrants are there, they have to put, or can be supported, they have to put the fire hydrants in. That's under this regulation or under what we have currently in place.
And then, and didn't we have, I remember four, five years ago, didn't we have a, a, in the plan, and they had to put a stub in for the fire hydrant in case the pressure became available in the future? Didn't we talk about, wasn't that right Dale?
We seem like we talked about that.
They didn't put the fire hydrant in because you don't want it in if you can't do it. But then if pressure becomes available down the road, all they got to do is go in and bolt it in.
There was one subdivision I remember we dealt with, it was a planned development where that discussion kept stagging.
That's the, that's the one I'm thinking about.
Yeah. And the requirement, of course, now that development never really has done anything. But one of the things CUD was going to do at that time was, like you said, the stubs would be there, but they wouldn't put any hydrants in until such a time.
You don't create that false sense of security.
Right, exactly, exactly.
So really, the sprinkler systems that we've been talking about for the last two and a half hours are, are already in our regs.
Correct. And our, yes, sir. They're, they've been in there since, I guess, 2008 or so.
And all we've been talking about is making a change from minor to-
Major to all, yes, sir.
But, yeah, major to all.
So that's all we're talking about. And if I, if I heard, I believe it was Mr. Jensen, that says their proposal is to take what we have in there now and what we're proposing out. Is that correct?
As I have heard it, and now Mr. Jensen could affirm that, but that's kind of what I hear them saying, yes, sir.
Shaking of the head, confirm that. Okay, so that's where we are.
Are we supposed to make a decision today?
No.
No.
Okay, thank God. But I, I don't see a reason to take it. If we take it out, that land is undevelopable. At least it's a piece of the puzzle that could be used to develop that property that cannot support a fire hydrant. I mean, I don't think I'm going to agree with going into all subdivisions. If somebody wants to build their granddaughter or nephew or cousin a house out there on a farm somewhere, then that may be a hardship on them. I mean, they're not a developer, they're not whatever. A full-blown large-platted subdivision out like we currently have, I believe, I believe we keep that in there, but it's not.
You and I are in favor of probably leaving the rigs as they are now.
Yes, they are. Because it's, it's not mandated. It just said, to be able to develop that property instead of just getting a flat, no. You have another option. Because without the fire, the sprinkler, an option for a major-platted subdivision, then there's a whole lot of property out there. We're just going to, you're going to walk up to the counter up there. You're going to say, no, no point in even presenting it. Or they're going to go see that they're engineering. And that's just an option, what we have at this point in time. And stuff. I'm, I'm a little leery about going into all subdivisions. That makes a hardship on just a whole lot of regular people just trying to build, build one house or whatever on an acre or whatever. Like I said, we don't have to make a decision today.
No, we won't make it this evening. But the input, yes, Mr. Jensen, one more time.
May I ask a question unrelated to-
Steve, get up, please, so we can get it on tape. I don't know that it's a question. This is something else that's been, been brought to my attention as the president of the Home Builders Association. We glossed over it in, when we were going through the line items. Had to do one, with the one inch of stormwater. I think that that's something that's going to, I'm told, I don't have the facts, but I'm told that's something that we may want to look into more. Here's, here's sketchy facts. That, the EPA regulations that, that we quoted saying, okay, we have to follow those EPA regulations or will be in violation of something or other. There was a lawsuit in Virginia, I believe, where the courts overturned that and said that the EPA did not have legal jurisdiction over rainwater. They have jurisdiction over pollutants, but not rainwater. And so for them to require that the first inch of rain stay on the property was, was, they didn't have, they didn't have legal standing. I don't have a lot of facts on that, but it's something that we just said, okay, it's something we got to do. We might want to check that a little bit.
I'd like to address that.
Let me just say, before we get into that, we've moved off of sprinkler systems and we're on another topic now.
Yeah, the, the court case in Virginia, when it came up, we were aware of it and we did some investigating because of the, what he just said. What Virginia tried to do is, is use the flow of rainwater as a TMDL. Now, TMDL are limitations you put on pollutants, total maximum daily load that you can put on pollutant, be it silt or whatever. So Virginia has water draining into the Chesapeake Bay and some different rivers, and they did not have a way to control the TMDLs that were listed. So what they said was, we will control the flow of stormwater into our receiving waters. In other words, they would say, you can only accept, I'll pick a number, 100 CFS of stormwater per vent into your, your facility. And so then it became, okay, how do we regulate that? How do you control all the stormwater runoff going into a facility so that you can only control so much? The court then ruled that that cannot be used as a TMDL or a way to control the flow of other pollutants. They did not vote rule on the one-inch retention. They did not rule on any of the other aspects of the stormwater regulations. We've got some court, some decisions on that in our office. We've, like I say, checked into it because of the time it was passed. I was, as Mr. Jensen said, I was thinking, well, that kind of is going to mess up the program or at least make it difficult to control. But it had, it's, it's, it has, the court, the ruling itself had to do with this way Virginia was trying to control the flow of pollutants into their receiving waters. And the court says you cannot treat stormwater. You cannot put a number on the quantity of stormwater, you know, because you don't control, you don't control the rain and there's no way to collect all the water that exceeds that number anywhere. And so the ruling of that court case does not affect this one-inch requirement that's coming down in the stormwater program. That's a separate identity and essential requirement.
Besides the sprinkler systems, the discussion we've had today, there were a couple of other issues that needed more discussion, one of those being the sidewalks. As you recall, there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting about the grass strip and, and all that. Our engineering staff has taken a few photos to kind of give you a visual example of, you know, what a two-foot strip or one foot versus a five to seven-foot strip versus no strip at all, looks like in the design behind that. We've got those pictures here.
We've had a discussion, Mr. Brooks, Highway Department, this is, that's Stewart Creek. This, of course, is zero between the curb and the sidewalk. And you notice the poles in the middle of sidewalk, sidewalk, the mailboxes are, and you have a little bit of a problem. These sidewalks should be built to ADA standards and you have some problems with meeting those standards.
The mailbox is called, caused the ADA standard problem.
Yeah, because, yep.
You don't have enough width there.
Right. Yeah, keep going. This is a one with a two-foot strip and you would- This is a one-foot strip. And then the, the ramp there, it's difficult to get the correct curbing and stuff for your ADA requirements because if you'll notice, if you see these ADA strips, they've got the little yellow deal with all the little bumps on them. You got to have the warning stops and some other things ADA requires. It's difficult to, to get that. Which one is this? This is a seven-foot strip. And of course, here, this is, they're putting in some trees. We just took these pictures to give you an idea. We've, again, we've, excuse me, we discussed carefully Mr. Brooks. And we're of the opinion that if you're going to have sidewalks, you probably need to put them outside the right of way. Josh, Josh left early. We, Doug and I met with him for a couple hours on Friday and a majority of it was taking him talking with sidewalks. If the sidewalk, the, the Highway Department does not maintain sidewalks. They don't, they don't have concrete equipment. They got asphalt equipment. If the sidewalks are put in the right of way, and we have some that are put in the right of way, but even though we state we're not going, the Highway Department will not accept them, there is a liability issue because they're in the right of way. And Josh, again, he's not here, indicated in our conversation, he felt that there is a strong possibility there may be some liability for the county. If you put them behind the right of way, then you're going to have them back seven, eight, 10 feet off the road, which makes them not as attractive as other places.
And, and in a starter home or, or small lot subdivision home, you're eating up a whole lot of the lot there.
That's correct, because the, the width of the, the sidewalks, if put in, should be installed to ADA requirements. We, again, as staff, we really are reluctant to, I don't know what to recommend to you. I don't, you know, if you've got a PRD in here and they come in and they, and they want to put sidewalks in, they're probably not going to want to put them out behind the road, I mean, behind the right of way. If you put them, you know, closer in, they look better, but you got, you, you're back in the right of way deal and you're back into the liability portion. And the fact that the Highway Department doesn't maintain them because we don't, again, we don't have the equipment and stuff at this point to do it.
Two, two, two issues there. One is liability beyond maintenance and the other one would be maintenance.
That's correct.
What about the extruded curb? How would a department have the equipment to maintain that either, though?
Right, and we no longer, we no longer allow extruded curb. We stopped that about two or three years ago.
It looks really nice for a while.
Yeah.
Sitting on top of the pavement. It's not going to be a long-term solution.
Right. And so we're no longer, extruded curb is not a, an option for the developers to bring it in anymore. So what we're, we're looking for you guys is some kind of, whatever you want to do. Again, Mr. Brooks is here, I mean, whatever.
What about that tree? Couple of years, they'll have the road greater with the bush all gone. Close the tree is right there to the street?
And you don't have to put trees in there. I, I mean, I think the point that was made at our last work session was that if nothing else, it gives the opportunity to put trees there. But, you know, we're, we're not looking to put any kind of a requirement in our subdivision regulations that require trees in the planting area, you know, whatever width it ends up being. You know, that's just an option if the developer wants to do that. You know, we're not going to maintain, or we're not going to mandate that. Well, no, we're not going to maintain it either, but we're not planning on- gonna maintain it either, but we're not planning on mandating that.
Will we be seeing, or can we see P R Ds submitted that have less than forty-foot setbacks on them?
Yes, can.
I mean, obviously, if you've got a very large front yard, this is not as big an issue as having a twenty-five-foot front yard, because you still have to park, with twenty-five-foot yard, we have to park a car in the driveway, and then you're blocking the sidewalk.
Yeah, and depending on the type of subdivision you see, if they're gonna be cutting down the front yard that much, you may see some subdivisions that have, like, back alley parking as opposed to driveways out in the front. I mean, you, you do see that, it just depends on what they're going for, but that is a, a good, a good point to make. You know, if you have a really small front yard, you can only fit a vehicle or two up there, and next thing you know, everybody's parking on the street, which in and of itself may not be a problem, but if that's really not what you're looking for, then you have to provide some sort of back alleyway or something to, uh, for vehicular parking.
Yeah, building, the setbacks are a little different than the right-of-way, they're, they're not always the same. So, even if it's a smaller lot and stuff, if they don't change, you know, something, they still got a fifty-foot right-of-way to deal with.
Sure, I, I'm just concerned about cars parking in the driveway and the tail end blocking the sidewalk.
And that is a distinct possibility, and we've seen it in some cases.
It's possible that, as far as the design of the house goes, even in a subdivision that has a lesser front setback, depending on how the house itself is designed, I mean, the dr- the garage could be recessed back a little further from the front of the house, you know, allow a side, maybe like a side-loaded or rear-loaded situation, where you give yourself a little more driveway room. So, there are ways to, and, uh, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chair, I, I think our, I'm sorry, I think our, uh, our, our consultant was wanting to make a comment or two, that's all.
Yes, since they've been sitting here patiently for the last two months, uh, I'm bringing on, I believe, it's, uh, is it Smith and Caldwell?
Caldwell, yes, yes, sir, yes.
Thank you. Uh, the, uh, uh, current regs that we're dealing with, it, what are they?
Yep, sidewalk.
Yeah, we don't main, we don't require sidewalks, right.
And after some conversation that you guys have had, after the first time we've talked about this, you guys are a little bit confused now as to what we should do and where we should go.
I think, yeah, I think Mr. Corbett said he's just hesitant to make a recommendation as to which way, for, I mean, we're obviously, we're not looking to mandate sidewalks, I think the discussion is, if they're there, how do we want them to look, essentially, is how, is what the discussion is.
Thank you for that clarification.
And one thing I guess I wanted to throw out there theoretically, 'cause again, I think what we talked about the last time was if sidewalks were incorporated, they'd be in the mechanism of the PUD. And one thing that could be considered, and again, I guess, one thing to Dale's, um, comment about the seven-foot being too wide, uh, there's always the option to reduce the right-of-way, which therefore, you could still keep the two-foot or the five-foot strip that you think looks better, but rather than have the fifty-foot right-of-way, you could, you could narrow that right-of-way, thus not impacting the smaller lots so much as far as the sidewalk incorporating that, you know, being into that, that front yard so much. So that's something whether the road commissioner or them are willing to consider, but that, I guess that's what we were thinking theoretically could do with the PUD option, 'cause that gives you a little bit of design flexibility to account for that, and then that sidewalk is indeed on, outside of the right-of-way, which is where everybody seems to want it to be, if that makes sense to you.
In the past, conversations narrowing the right-of-way has come up with if you can get the fire engine down, down the street, so that gets back to if we need to sprinkle the houses, that's the fire engine.
Yeah, and we're not talking about narrowing the...
No, no, no.
And we're not talking about narrowing the, the roadway width or anything, we're just talking about narrowing that right-of-way, 'cause obviously, then, you don't need that right-of-way for the, where the walk would theoretically go. So, I think it would have more of an application on your local road scenarios there, as compared to your collectors or your wider roads, but again, that's, I think, something that could be worked out with the PUD to get the look that you want, as, as part of that. And street trees don't have to be a part of that, I mean, that could be up to the developer whether he wants to do that or not. So, we just kinda, that's the beauty of the PUD, I think, is to allow some flexibility relative to that.
So, maybe just to kinda summarize what you just said, uh, in a planned development, we're talking about if they wanna put sidewalks in, uh, maybe a, a foot or two strip is probably best, is that what you're saying?
Well, I think that's up to you, what, what you, you prefer. I think as a, as a planner, now, we like five-foot, but I think we're here in the direction of two-foot, you know, if that, if that's what you prefer, I think that's up to y'all, how, how you want that. I just think it could be, again, it could, you could modify the right-of-way width there to, to account for getting into, uh, into the, the private, into a private easement behind that, so...
And let me, my name is Brett Smith, let me real quickly address that parking. We have the same problem, Thompson Station has now, you know, because they have alley-loaded lots, and we're seeing that on, on, and on front-loaded garages like you're talking about, if you have a sidewalk, what you may do is then on the plat, mandate at least twenty feet in addition to the setback. So if you have a five-foot sidewalk into the lot, a twenty-five-foot garage setback, so that a, a car could be parked outside a closed garage door and not be past the sidewalk, does that make sense? And that's as easy as just putting the nut on the plat. Every time we have an alley-loaded product, we have that note, see, the five feet or twenty, so that nobody's trying to park halfway right there. So that simply, if the developer provides sidewalks, the garage setback is twenty feet past it, or twenty-five feet past the right-of-way, and it can be handled that easily, because that is a legitimate issue.
Thank you.
I will say, in our conversations, uh, with Mr. Brooks, it was brought up about either a, a smaller right-of-way or larger forty or fifty. So, we left it at fifty because we didn't feel like it was up to us to, if a developer comes in and he's got two projects, tell him on one, because he's got sidewalks, he can, you know, go to a forty-footer, and, and he's gotta go fifty feet on the other one, in other words, we were trying to treat them the same, so that would, I assume, and the P R D, because they asked for different things, they could ask for that, uh, particular item. We're just trying to remain constant on what we're doing. Uh, Mr. Brooks had a suggestion that I thought you might wanna consider, because of the subdivisions themselves, supposedly, the traffic is slower and all this, if you didn't wanna put in sidewalks, uh, they could put in, like, two-foot bike lanes. Most people are gonna walk in the streets anyways, so at least the bike lanes would give them a little extra to walk in. Just a, a thought, that way, you get out of the sidewalks altogether, he has asphalt equipment, he can, you know, do the, the bike lanes and stuff when he has to without additional equipment or people.
What would you do then, not allow sidewalks?
Well, I'm just saying, that's, that, in that case, you wouldn't put a sidewalk in.
Yeah, but what if they wanted to put sidewalks in in the planned development?
And then, they, they'd have to just have them outside the right-of-way.
I think we just look at these on a case-by-case basis, but I don't know if we can legally do that.
We have to have a public hearing on all this, correct?
Yes, sir, we do.
Do we, we're losing members here.
Yeah, I gotta go to...
Do we need to, uh, discuss this a little further, this one?
Well, I, it sounds, I mean, just based on the, the discussion, I think that, uh, it sounds like that there are questions about this. I mean, I don't think we've really, really, uh, come to a consensus on the, the sprinkler issue either, and then there's, there are a couple more things that, that we weren't able to get to today, which are kinda related to the roads, but, uh, you know, I guess, as a recommendation, I mean, if you want, we can do another work session at our May Day meeting, or we could even do it at our May Night meeting right now, it doesn't look